Recording in progress.
Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening on March 6th. I now call this meeting to order. I invite all to join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Hedges. Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Councilmember Newsom.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. We're excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to our deputy clerk. If participating remotely, use the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star mute, star six to unmute. These options for a public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by council to be routine and enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number one, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number two, Youth Commissioners to the Park and Recreation Commission Ordinance Adoption. Item number three, Peninsula Clean Energy Public EV Fleets Program Customer Participation Agreement. Item number four, Stormwater Funding Analysis Agreement. Item number five, Collaborative Solutions LLC Workday Lean On Services Support Budget Appropriation and Statement of Work Approval. Item number six, Collaborative Solutions LLC Enterprise Planning System Implementation Services Supplemental Budget Appropriation and Change Order. Item number seven, E-Verify for Web Services Employers Memorandum of Understanding. Item number eight, Police Department Serological Expenses for Forensic DNA Testing of Evidence Change Order. Item number nine, Congressional directed Spending Request for 19th Avenue Fashion Island Boulevard Class Four Bike Way Project Letters of Support. And finally, item number 10, Congressional directed Spending Project slash Community Funds Project Letters of Support.
Are there any members of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any of the consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only, please.
We have, we have one public comment and we'll set the timer for three minutes.
Okay, good evening. I just had two questions on the stormwater, stormwater funding analysis. I was looking at it over and it looks like they've had some vast payments, October 19th, $54,000 and then again on August, $145,000 and then today it's $205,000 and change, which adds up to close to $400,000 or so. Is that, am I getting that correctly? And is this money going towards the actual company that's going to be doing the work? Or is this just a council, I mean, a analysis? Would that money be better spent with a company that actually spends the money doing the work? Than rather just get in that? But you, you maybe could explain that to me. And then the second item is on the bike issue, number nine, Bike Way Project. I was on that committee, on the bike committee. If you could show that on a map, if you, if you have time, what that project's going to look like. I'd be interested to see if it's the same thing as we had when we made our recommendations to the city council. If the, if it's changed at all, the route and the project itself, thank you.
Madam Mayor, we have no further public comments for the consent calendar.
Thank you so much. So, moving on. Oh, let's see. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
With pleasure, Mayor. Councilmember Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges. Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
And Mayor Lee.
Yes.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda.
I have no yellow speaker slips for general public comment and no hands raised. If you wish to speak to an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand now. There are no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, well with that, we will move on to old business. Item 11, General Plan Update, Land Use Heights and Densities and Measure Y. Looks like we have a presentation by our deputy director, Zachary Dahl, and Placeworks Principal, Joanna Jensen.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. Zach Dahl, Deputy Director with the city's Community Development Department. And I'm joined here this evening by Joanna Jensen, Principal with Placeworks, the lead consultant for the city's general plan update. Before we begin, I do want to acknowledge the team that is supporting the general plan update. That includes our core team made up of city staff from both community development and public works. Our technical advisory committee, which is comprised of staff members from all city departments in San Mateo Consolidated Fire. And then our consultant team, which is led by Placeworks. For tonight's agenda, we'll start with our staff presentation, followed by clarifying questions, public comment, and then move on to council discussion and ultimately direction. So for the objectives tonight, we do want to provide an overview of the general plan update with a focus on, on heights and densities that would go into the draft general plan. Discuss measure Y alignment with the general plan update. And then touch on other policies and programs that maybe, we may want to consider for incorporation into the general plan update. We will then receive public comments and then move to discussion and ultimately direction on these three topics, which is the updated height and density ranges that should go into the general plan. How measure Y should be incorporated into the general plan. And if there's direction on a future ballot initiative related to measure Y. And then, and any other policies or programs that should be considered for incorporation into the draft general plan. So we'll start with a brief project overview, how we've gotten to this evening. This starts with our general plan updates vision and value statement. Which is, this is the, the vision statement that is kind of the underpinning for our general plan. And it notes that San Mateo is a vibrant, livable, diverse, and healthy community that respects the quality of its neighborhoods, fosters a flourishing economy, is committed to equity, and is a leader in environmental sustainability. And it notes the five core values that are guiding the general plan, which include diversity, balance, inclusivity, prosperity, and resiliency. The path of the general plan update, it originally started in the end of 2018 with establishment of a community-wide vision for general plan 2040. Then moving forward from there into 2019, there was a discussion that established the study areas that should be focused, should be the areas where growth and change is focused. And we do want to highlight that consideration and awareness of at that point, measure P and subsequently measure Y was definitely a factor in how those study areas were established. And then also as part of that, the study areas did not include any single-family residential areas when those boundaries were established. Once the 10 study areas in the general plan were established, we moved to creating a range of land use alternatives that could guide the growth and change in those areas. And then from winter 2019 through the summer of 2021, with an interruption from the COVID-19 pandemic, the draft land use alternatives were finalized. And then from fall '21 into last summer, we had our discussion about the preferred land use and circulation scenario. With the scenarios ultimately being selected by council in May, or I'm sorry, in April. And then the land use map confirmed in July. Once that took place, then we moved to the draft goals, policies, and actions for all elements of the general plan. And that culminated with two council meetings last fall with direction provided for how those goals, policies, and actions should be incorporated into the draft general plan. And so now, we're coming before you at this meeting right here as a study session to really receive direction on the heights, densities, and measure Y incorporation that should be incorporated into the draft general plan. As you can see from our schedule here, we are looking at publication of the draft general plan toward the end of May. And that would really kick off our next round of community outreach and engagement. And then we are looking at public meetings before the general plan subcommittee and the planning commission in the summer. And then coming back to council in the fall to review and discuss the full draft general plan. And then that keeps us on track to have a document that's ready for council's consideration and adoption by the end of the year. I also want to spend a few minutes talking about the community outreach and engagement that has accompanied this whole effort. As this has been a real, real high priority, both from past councils and this current council. And it's really guided the general plan and where we are today. Starting in 2018 through the end of 2022, we've had 23 community workshops, 26 pop-up events, five online activities and surveys. We've done two citywide mailers that were sent to every household in San Mateo. We've had over 16 staff presentations to various community groups. And we focus specific outreach to our hard-to-reach communities to ensure that they've had a voice in the process as well. I also want to highlight our 2022 community survey. This was a statistically significant survey that included a number of questions related to community interest and included several questions that focused on general plan-related topics. Themes that came out of the survey included housing affordability, and particularly for our lower and middle-income households. There were a number of important factors that the community identified as priorities. And that included planning for adequate water supply, preserving open space and creating new parks, reducing or minimizing vehicle trips and traffic congestion, focusing on pedestrian-friendly areas, and reducing pollution and greenhouse gas emissions. There was also a support that emerged for taller-height buildings between eight and 12 stories that was well-placed if the trade-off was that more land could be preserved for parks, recreation, recreational amenities, and community amenities. And if that helped balance minimizing change to our existing neighborhoods. So, moving forward, we will have a number of additional opportunities for the council to weigh in on this draft general plan. This includes three meetings coming up in the fall to review the draft general plan. And then up to three council meetings, end of the year into the beginning of '24, to consider the final general plan and ultimately adoption of the general plan and the environmental impact report that goes with it. So at this point, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joanna to go over the proposed heights and densities that are up for consideration for our draft general plan.
Okay, thank you very much, Zach. As Zach said, I'm Joanna Jensen with Placeworks. It's my first time presenting to some of you tonight. It's a pleasure to be here, thank you for having me. I wanted to talk a little bit about both heights and densities in the draft general plan, which is still under formation. And as I start, I want to just emphasize the word on this slide, which is draft. Everything that we're talking about tonight is still very much in draft form. And the next major milestone, as Zach outlined, would be the publication of a draft general plan so that you and the community can really consider this plan as a whole. So what we're hoping to do tonight is get a little bit more direction and discussion on some of the parameters that would be published in that draft plan. But that plan will remain in draft form for additional community discussion until it is adopted by this council. So, this is the land use map as it was developed through the alternatives process that Zach mentioned. And it's really built on 10 study areas that we developed as part of that extensive land use alternatives process. And the next slide shows the boundaries of those 10 study areas in a little bit more detail. So essentially, outside of these 10 study areas, if we go back for one second, those are more or less the existing designations of the general plan with some, you know, tweaks to make sure that we're being internally consistent. But really, the focus of change with this general plan update is within the 10 study areas that we identified as part of the land use alternatives process with extensive community and council input. So we have these maps for reference, if you have any questions about exactly where different designations are within these areas. But what we wanted to do tonight is talk a little bit more about the implications of both the allowed heights and densities under the new proposed draft map that we just showed on those previous slides. So, and when we talk about heights and densities, we're really focusing particularly on residential development. Then the draft general plan would allow residential development in two sets of land use designations. A set of residential land use designations and a set of mixed-use designations, which would include residential development along with other types of development that would be allowed in the same building. So, or on the same site. This, this table is really just a summary to give you an overview in one place of the range of densities and heights in both the residential and the mixed-use land use categories. So you can see that, very typical for a general plan, it goes from a very low intensity, height and density, up to a high height and density with kind of steps along the way. Most of these steps up to medium one are things that are in place already and that are consistent with measure Y. Through the land use alternatives process, we did hear interest from the community and the council in considering some places where there may be exceptions to measure Y. And so we have added three gradations of designations that allow heights and/or densities that would go above the limits that are currently in place with measure Y. And that's the medium two, the high one, and the high two intensity categories. So on the next couple of slides, we're going to go into a little bit more detail about these. The history here is that these, the proposed new designations for consideration really originated in a tool that we called the Placeties Menu that we used during the alternatives evaluation process. And you can see a picture of it on the right side of the slide. So every map of the alternatives included the colors that corresponded to kind of the descriptions of these categories that's in the text column. And then some images to illustrate what that kind of development might look like. And we were showing you an example of the residential page, but there were similar pages for all of the different land use categories. And that was so that we could examine a range of different densities, heights, and scales across the three land use alternatives. That process, as Zach alluded to, went on from 2019 to 2021 through the pandemic. And many people in the community and on the council invested a lot of time and energy in understanding and grappling with this placeties menu and the implications for the land use alternatives. And there had come to be a pretty good understanding of it as a relatively clearly organized set of categories. So when we started looking at land use designations for the updated land use element, we wanted to build on that community familiarity and the knowledge of the placeties menu and use that as the basis for a set of revised land use designations going forward that will define parameters for height and density in the updated general plan. So let me break down. First, the density range recommendations and then the height range recommendations in these proposed new designations. The, the land use categories are going to, we're going to increase the number of gradations or categories from just three, low, medium, and high, to seven, to really allow for refined transitions in density and intensity between neighborhoods and different types of areas. We're going to maintain a very low range of one to nine units per acre to align with existing R1 neighbors, neighborhoods, as well as a low range that's broken into two parts, low one and low two, to align with R2 and R3 zones existing in the city. So that would go from 10 to 19 units per acre under low one to 20 to 35 units per acre under low two. Similarly, the medium range is broken into two components. Medium one is consistent with measure Y. It's a transition area between low designations and higher designations. It, medium one allows 36 to 50 units per acre. Medium two is the next step up. It allows from 51 to 99 units an acre. It's only applied within the 10 study areas that I showed you on the map a slide or two ago. And it does exceed a current measure Y density limits. And then finally, we have also added two high designations. High one allows 100 to 130 units per acre. High two keeps the same floor of 100 units per acre, but allows up to 200 units per acre. And this high designation is really applied in specific areas that are close to transit or in key sites that were identified through our public process of determining the preferred land use alternative. So similarly, height recommendations are, follow a same structure and are aligned with the same categories. So the very low range is allowing one to two or possibly one to three stories to align with existing conditions where we do have some three-story buildings in that R1 area. The low two up to medium one range, both of those categories would allow two to five stories. And again, this is important because we want to make sure, we heard throughout the process that we do not want to unintentionally downzone any landowner who already has this type of height allowed. So we're adding medium two of four to six stories. That's intended to align with the community input that we heard and make sure that the density ranges of the medium two designation are achievable. And then finally, within the high range, high one and high two would allow anywhere from five up to 10 stories. This is the first time that we've really put a cap on the upper end of the high range. When we talked about this as through all the alternatives process, there was, it was kind of a, just a plus sign at the upper range. And we, we heard that the community would like a little bit more certainty about what the high end of that range is. The community survey that Zach referenced explored ideas of allowing buildings up to 12 stories potentially. But for the moment, we've decided to kind of cap this at a 10 stories for the, the height range. And I'll talk a little bit more about the thinking there as well. But I want to talk about another instrument that the general plan uses to regulate how buildings get developed and how much of the site they take up. And this is an important tool that's called Floor Area Ratio, or FAR, or F A R. So these three diagrams show you how F A R can be different, differently interpreted for different buildings and the flexibility that comes with different heights and site coverage. So the first example starts with just an F A R of 1.0. So Floor Area Ratio means the ratio of the square footage of the building as compared to the square footage of the lot. So if you have a lot that is 20,000 square feet and you have 1.0 F A R, then that building can be 20,000 square feet. But it doesn't say, F A R doesn't say whether or not that building has to be one stories, two stories, four stories, or whatever configuration. It simply says how many square feet the building can have as a relationship to the square footage of the site. So you can see that in the first example, with an F A R of 1.0, you could end up with several different configurations. And the same goes as the F A R gets higher. So a building could be three times as much square foot, square footage as the site. It could be up to five times as much square footage as the site. The important thing that these graphics illustrate is that one thing that we have heard a lot about from community members throughout this process is the importance of high-quality design and the importance of amenities like open space, the importance of being very sensitive to the edge of new development, especially where it abuts existing neighborhoods that have a lower density than that new development. So you can get a sense from some of these diagrams that allowing taller heights gives you a chance to preserve more open space, as illustrated by the green bits of the site that are showing on these diagrams. And it also allows you to vary the height of the building, to have things like step backs next to what might be lower story development that's adjacent. On the other hand, when you have lower heights, then what tends to happen is that applicants, landowners, developers will want to maximize the square footage of the building. And they do that by taking up as much of the site as possible. So this is just some visual illustrations of how that thinking happens architecturally. We're going to be talking to you tonight about some staff recommendations for considering potential ranges of heights and densities that we would like to include in the draft general plan so that we can continue to have public dialogue about these ranges. Nothing is going to be decided tonight. We're just trying to get a sense of what's a good starting point to put in the general plan during the draft general plan public review process. So increasing the density within the 10 study areas that we identified through the land use process, land use alternatives process. For density particularly, that means the number of units is going to be higher. That increases the amount of affordable units that will be produced due to the city's inclusion. area ordinance. That's going to increase the ability for the city to meet its current and future reno's or regional housing needs allocations on the fewest number of sites. And it focuses growth around transit in order to meet the city's goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled, which also reduces greenhouse gas and other pollutant emissions, and helps to limit the traffic and circulation impacts on local roadways. As Zach mentioned, this also focuses intensity and density in these study areas, which avoids the need to upzone existing low-density neighborhoods. That was something we heard through the land use alternatives process. At the same time, considering increased heights within the study areas only creates opportunities for open space, as I illustrated on the previous slide, and different building design options that create flexibility for how the site, the height of the building might change over the site, rather than simply filling up the entire site all the way to the edge in order to maximize square footage. The general plan is a very, very important tool for determining how development happens in San Mateo, but it's not the only tool. The zoning code is another very important piece of crafting development regulations, and it's going to need to be updated essentially as soon as the city adopts an updated general plan. Within the zoning code, just like you have today, you will have additional districts that further refine how development looks and what can be built within a given designation, including additional detail on density, FAR, and height. So the districts within a given general plan designation, it might be implemented by multiple zoning districts, which would have a range of densities within the range allowed by that general plan designation, densities and heights. So we were right now, staff is anticipating that the zoning code update will happen following the adoption of the general plan. We're thinking about the best ways to approach that task. We'll include amendments to the zoning code as well as the zoning map to make sure that they're consistent with the general plan. It is a significant undertaking. It could take one to two years to complete. It depends on the extent of changes needed. Just like with the general plan, it's going to include a lot of community outreach and engaging, engagement with direction from the planning commission at multiple steps along the way. And it's going to be closely tied to additional pieces of the general plan, implementation plan, to track and monitor the actions that the city needs to take to implement the general So we have received a lot of comments and questions about the density, state density bonus law, and how that interacts with the set of height and density regulations that we're talking about in the draft general plan. So I wanted to spend a couple of slides explaining that a little bit more. The land use designations in the general plan set the biggest envelope of allowable development and really kind of set the maximum for what can be considered. Then you have another layer of detail provided in the zoning code that adds specificity about densities, heights, other site standards like setbacks that fall within the ranges that are established by the general plan. The state has a set of laws that allow density bonuses for projects that provide affordable housing, to incentivize developers to build affordable housing that is needed in California, and allows developers to build more units and exceed the limits that are set by zoning. And this applies statewide to every city and county in California. So if projects meet the eligibility criteria for achieving a density bonus, they can exceed existing density limits that are set by the zoning code. And they can also request other things that are called concessions or incentives that have to do with not only density, but other types of site regulations, including height increases, or setbacks, or FAR changes, or other types of provisions that might apply to the zoning code in order to reduce the cost of development and enable them to provide affordable housing. So all of those things that I just mentioned are really provisions that are part of the zoning code itself. The density bonus is something that interacts with the zoning rather than something that interacts with the land use designations in the general plan, but it's very closely related because the general plan is really where we set that maximum envelope of allowed So anticipating that projects are likely to come forward that meet the criteria to achieve a density bonus, we have taken that into consideration. The city cannot prevent projects from seeking this density bonus. Again, this is a state law provision, and so if projects are eligible for the density bonus, that is something that the city is obligated by law to provide. And state law is rapidly evolving in this field of density bonus. But we're trying to anticipate what might come forward and what the city might want to allow as part of the base density versus what we think might be achievable through density bonus and/or through negotiations with property owners to provide community benefits. And so for that reason, we've kind of dialed back some of the height ranges that we explored in the placeties menu as part of the land use alternatives process, whereas the placeties menu considered a medium range that would have gone up to four to seven stories, and the high category, as I mentioned, was just kind of eight plus without any stated ceiling. We now have a set of recommended land use designations where the medium covers three to five for medium one and four to six stories for medium two. High includes, high one includes five to eight stories, and high two includes six to 10 stories, with 10 being that established maximum that the city would allow as part of the base density. So density bonus could be part of the process for a project within any of these designations, depending on the criteria of that specific project and the density bonus that it would be eligible for under state law. And with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Zach to discuss how these align with Measure Y.
Great. Thank you, Joanna. So the second part of our discussion this evening, we are looking for input and direction on how the general plan update interacts with and aligns with Measure Y. This has been a discussion that has been ongoing throughout the entire course of the general plan update, and a lot of questions and direction were provided to this point to explore whether we had a general plan update that was fully, that maintained the limits set by Measure Y, or explored opportunities for ways that certain areas could exceed those limits. And so for a bit of background, Measure Y was adopted by the voters in November of 2020. It retained the heights and density limits that were originally set by Measure P, and it does have a sunset provision in 2030. As we've noted, the height limit is up to 55 feet, approximately five stories, and the density limit is up to 50 dwelling units per acre. There are certain provisions in Measure Y that allow for exceptions under certain circumstances, such as when the community benefits are provided or in certain specified areas where you can go up to 75 feet. And then also, state density bonus law does allow projects to receive density bonuses and receive concessions that could allow it to exceed both height and density. But we do also want to reiterate, any direction provided that would offer provisions that exceed Measure Y would require voter approval before they could take effect. So no council action or updated general plan that exceeds Measure Y could go into effect before first going before the vote of the people. There we go. And so along with the agenda report, we did include a map that outlines the proposed draft general plan land uses with Measure Y, and it really identifies the alignment. And you can see the gradation from kind of a deep green up through a red that identifies land uses within the study areas that would be, have a maximum height that would be either compliant or within 10 feet of the limit set by Measure Y, and then moving upward from there where you have the light green, the yellow, and then ultimately the red, which would illustrate a height limit that could be over 30 feet above the limits currently set by Measure Y. And as you can see in many areas, we have focused on those transitional edges to where you aren't getting stark transitions. And really, the highest heights are focused in areas that are close to transit or in key opportunity sites that are large, such as older shopping centers that are in transition. And as noted before, the land uses up through medium one are consistent with Measure Y, but then the heights and densities in medium two, high one and high two, for both residential and mixed use, and then office high, would do have provisions that could exceed Measure So I just wanted to run through quickly because obviously there's a lot of information there. Just provide, if there are questions, kind of some zoomed-in areas that give you a better idea of these heights and how they align with Measure Y, starting with the downtown area and areas to the north of San Mateo. Then we have kind of our 92 corridor where you have the Bridgepoint Shopping Center to the east, and then you have your Hayward Park Station, and then the middle of our El Camino corridor, right where El Camino and 92 intersect. And then we have the southern end of the city. This includes Hillsdale Mall area, our Hillsdale Caltrain Station, and then the Mollystones Belmonte area at the southern end of the city, as well as the interchange with Hillsdale Boulevard and Highway 101. And so what we're looking at here, as noted before, the draft general plan would continue to apply the Measure Y limits, and this would be until either the measure sunsets or voters provide a different direction. As currently proposed, the public review draft of the general plan would include Measure Y as appendix, but the specific text in Measure Y would not be incorporated or integrated into the land use element itself. We have, we will include a draft policy that specifically outlines how the general plan and Measure Y align, and we would reference Measure Y in each of the land use categories with regard to any provision in that land use designation that's inconsistent would default to Measure Y until such time that it either sunsets or there's an updated voter initiative that is approved. And so looking at a timeline moving forward, if we are on target to have a general plan that's ready and a final environmental impact report that's ready for adoption by the end of the year into January of '24, that would put us on a timeline where council could consider ballot language and a resolution in the spring of '24, and then bring it before the voters in November of '24. And so that piece is the second part that we're looking for direction from council this evening. And then the third part is, this discussion kind of surfaced during adoption of our housing element, and then also some questions about policies that resulted from direction from last fall. We wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh in on other policies and actions or programs that should be incorporated into the draft general plan. And specifically, we wanted to highlight earlier direction we'd received with regard to policies and actions related to payment of prevailing wage, our living wage, and support of local hiring. Based on that direction, we are proposing for actions and policies that speak to various aspects of that, with one of the actions recognizing what we're already doing in our affordable housing commercial linkage fee, and that action would support continuing that practice. So we've specifically highlighted these, but we're also open to hearing any other direction from council on other policies or actions that staff should consider as we move forward with preparing the draft general plan. We also want to acknowledge the written public comment that we have received. As of 2:00 PM today, between then and when we published the agenda report last Thursday, we had received 72 written comments. All written comments that are submitted are posted to our website, strive-san mateo.org, and that includes a full library of comments received since the beginning of this process started in 2018. So we've got that much larger library of community input that continues to guide the recommendations that staff makes, but we wanted to particularly highlight the more recent comments that have come in in the preparation for this meeting. There was a lot of expressions of support to maintain the Measure Y height and density limits, as well as other expressions to revise Measure Y to allow for increased housing production. There were also some comments related to more community outreach and engagement on this topic, and so we do want to highlight to that effect, this is an ongoing effort, and the input provided tonight will feed into that community dialogue we have as we move forward with publishing our draft general plan. And we are looking for opportunities to ensure that the outreach materials and information provided, as well as the way we engage the community, is as effective as possible. So this is an ongoing effort that we'll continue to do moving into the spring, once we have our draft general plan, and once we have our draft environmental impact report. So with that, staff is looking for direction from council on these three topic areas related to the heights and densities with each land use category, how Measure Y and the general plan update align, and then input on other policies or programs. So this does conclude staff presentation, and we are available for any questions that you may have.
Before we start with council questions, I think it's really important, given the rampant misinformation that has been circulating, just to level set that tonight, there is no final decision that's being made. Is that correct?
That is correct.
That there is still multiple opportunities for community input?
Yes. Up until the general plan is adopted by council, everything in the general plan will remain in draft form.
And the council can take no action that would override a voter initiative. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so therefore, the only, the only way to adopt, to truly adopt and implement the general plan in any way that would be noncompliant with Measure Y would be through a ballot initiative, through a fair and free democratic election. Is that correct?
That is correct. An updated vote of the people would be required for anything that is in conflict with the current Measure Y.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're all clear on the facts because I think that's really important to set the pace of this conversation. Councilmember Hedges.
First, I have a little bit of confusion regarding the high one on housing. On the staff report I got, it said it was between five to nine stories, and in the slide that I saw tonight, it said between five and eight.
Yeah, the correct range is five to eight. If that, we'll correct that in the presentation, but the range that's being proposed for high one would be five to eight stories.
I know, I printed it out. It's in front of me. Okay. A few other questions, and then later on, I'll have comments, but not quite yet. Can we satisfy Measure Y and also the state's rena request using the current study sessions for the short term and the long term?
For this current rena cycle, as is outlined in our locally adopted housing element, we have identified a path forward under Measure Y. For future rena cycles, it does not appear that we would have a path without rezoning or changes to Measure Y.
Also, I've received several emails and actually some direct contact with citizens here about having future study sessions that will image what's going to be there with larger maps on the wall rather than the emails that we received. Is that going to happen, or is that possible?
We have definitely heard that feedback, and we are looking at ways to provide that type of imagery that's readily available to the public, such as general plan kind of stations where maybe they're located at the local library or city hall. But yes, we're definitely going to look at ways that we can make this information presentable and available to the public to review and engage with.
Oh, and just one small comment is that, yeah, I live in an area that allows seven stories for office buildings. 75 feet is the height limit there. So there are areas that were proposed in Measure H, P, and Y that are over the five-story
Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor. Question about density bonuses. So under state law, is it, is it true that we could build, or a developer could build beyond five stories to meet or to get that density bonus? Meaning, I see that you say medium two is four to six. If they were to be building a six-story building and having enough affordable housing units, would they qualify then to override the Measure Y 55-foot limit and put a six-story on it, on the building?
Yes. Currently, and we have recently approved some projects that have had height that exceeded Measure Y limits, when certain... When certain percentages of affordable housing are provided, a developer can ask for a concession that goes beyond the Measure Y height limit.
So really, Measure, or Medium Two, could theoretically be within tolerances of Measure Y?
Yes, there are two recent projects that I can think of that both, that had six stories that were recently approved utilizing density bonus.
Okay. I might have another question later, but I'll come back. Thank you.
As a follow-up to Councilmember Newsom's question on density bonus, affordable housing has been a primary concern of this community, and so I think it would be helpful for us to discuss how density bonus applies in terms of producing affordable housing in view of our base density and inclusionary requirement, and then also the state requirement in terms of meeting their affordable housing standard of, I think it's 10%. So if you could just run through some basic math back of the envelope to help the community understand, how does density bonus work into our stated goals of producing more affordable housing, and how does it work against it?
Definitely. So when looking at state, being qualifying for these density bonus provisions, you need to provide certain percentages of affordable against the base density that the city establishes. So if we're looking at a one-acre site, and currently it would have a maximum density of 50 units an acre. So if a project provides 15% of those 50 units, they then qualify for a 50% density bonus plus concessions. So they could maybe ask for a reduced setback and add a story of height, and then they could also build at that point up to 75 units. The key being density bonus units, you can't ask for an affordable percentage of those units. If that same site had a base density of, say, 100 units an acre, in order to qualify for density bonus provisions, that developer would now need to provide 15% of those 100 units. So as opposed to seven and a half units, you're now looking at 15 affordable units. And so an increased base density improves the number, or increases the number of affordable units that can be produced. Right now, for most projects that are maximizing their density bonus provisions, the functional percentage of affordable housing that's being provided is around 10%. With an increased base density, we'll start to see projects that are closer to 15% for the number of affordable units provided. So that, I don't know if that fully answers your question, but that's kind of the comparison of what happens if we increase base density.
Okay, so for those of us that kind of lost track of some of those numbers, do you mind just breaking it down a little bit clearer? So if we're looking at, you know, apples-to-apples comparison, I heard seven affordable units versus 15 affordable units. So how do you get to those two numbers?
If you're looking at one plot of land, the increased number of units that is required by the city means a higher percentage of affordable units that have to go along with it. So one acre, under our current provisions, that would generate seven and a half affordable units, with an increased density could now provide, say, 15 affordable units.
Okay, so, and, okay, so I think, hopefully, that helps clarify some, yes. Councilmember Newsom.
I'm sorry, I had notes, and I couldn't come up with it. My second question was, my second question was a redevelopment question. Councilmember Hedges mentioned that there are buildings that are commercial in his neighborhood that are currently seven stories. If we had a developer that didn't per se tear down a building, but, you know, renovated a building and converted it from a commercial building to a residential building, do the Measure Y height requirements still hold? Or is that, if it's a 70-foot building, it can be replaced with, or, you know, redeveloped as a 70-foot building?
We would have to look at, I mean, if you say redevelop, where it's torn down and rebuilt, that would change it. But if they're maintaining that structure and converting the use, yes, they have legal rights to maintain that building in its current height and form.
Councilmember Hedges.
Yeah, just to clarify, I didn't go far enough. That applies both to housing and office in the neighborhood I live in, not just office.
With regard to density bonus, you need to meet certain housing component provisions.
What I'm talking about is just the height of the building. You can have, you can have both for housing and, in the areas where we go, where Measure P went up to 75 feet, it could be for either housing or for office.
That is correct.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Zach, if we go forward with these land use designations, and if the city decides to pursue a ballot measure, to ask the voters whether to allow for this general plan update to surpass Measure Y in terms of some of these limits in the study areas, but that ballot measure fails. Could you give a sense of what the study area land use designations would become as a result? I'm sort of guessing that the, anything that was beyond Measure Y might shift to something like Medium One, or, you know, that would fall within the provisions of Measure Y. Is that right, or could you please correct?
Yeah, functionally, that's how it would go. All of the Medium Two and both high categories would functionally default to the thresholds that are in Medium One, with the exception of the areas identified in Measure Y that could achieve higher heights if there's community benefits or other provisions as specified in Measure Y. But functionally, all of those three higher land use categories would all default to the intensities of Medium One.
And I think most of my other questions have been answered by the presentation, so those are my questions at this time. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Nash, do you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mayor. Number one, thank you also for your clarification merely about the fact that anything that comes out of this council, or ultimately, general plan as a recommendation, would have to go before the voters. I think it's very important that you underline that, because that is the heart of what Measure Y really is all about. Number two, I wanted to say thank you to Deputy Director Dahl to really focus on density bonus and the fact that we're looking particularly at the higher areas. So high one, if I'm understanding, and Deputy Director, you can correct me if I'm wrong, high one could potentially be 10 stories, because you could get a density bonus that could allow for two other floors. And high two could be 12 stories, because you could get a density bonus equal to two stories. So we're really, we want as much affordable housing as possible, so we're effectively looking at 10 and 12, and that's why you put them initially in as eight to 10. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's the general premise. To date, we haven't seen any projects request two stories as a concession under density bonus, but there aren't any limits in density bonus. But functionally, what we've seen is some degree of height increase or a full story of height increase requested as a concession for more recent projects.
And if I could jump in here as well, so Deputy Mayor Nash, the state density bonus law doesn't focus so much on stories as the additional density bonus units. So for example, if a certain percentage of affordable units is sought, you know, when compared to the base density, that gets you additional density bonus units and incentives and concessions. And then the incentive for concession could then be used, or waiver, could be used to ask for additional height in order to accommodate those additional density bonus units. So your scenario is entirely possible, but the state density bonus law, which by the way does look to the density not only in the zoning, but also in the general plan, the density bonus law is focused more on the units rather than stories.
I completely agree, and thank you for that clarification. And City Attorney, I just wanted it to be very clear that in terms of reality, we could be looking, because of density bonuses that are achieved, at up to an additional couple of stories. I'm thinking in terms of how people see things. So thank you for that clarification. Number three, Deputy Director Dahl, in terms of the high two level, the new level, in both residential and mixed use, if that were not available, what level of impact would that have on your planning? If it only went up to high one and not high two?
If the cap was at high one, that would reduce our maximum potential density from 200 units an acre down to 130 units an acre. So that is a meaningful drop, and so there would be a definite reduction in the amount of housing that could be achieved over this 20-year period, but we would need to rerun the model before we had exact numbers as to what that would do for potential growth reduction.
Right, and how we align with our RENA goals in this cycle and the next one. I think that would be important to understand. My next question is, is it true that if we recommended higher levels, that we could also, and this might happen more in the zoning code as opposed to the general plan, we could accompany or put restrictions on those higher levels by introducing strict setback requirements or open space requirements, or some way encouraging not just studio and one bedrooms, but the kinds of two- and three-bedroom homes that we want to see so that people come to San Mateo, but they stay in San Mateo as they raise their families? But that, in terms of setbacks and open space, we could have some strong tools in the zoning code that would strongly encourage developers to make that happen if they were to go higher. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. Along with our land use designations, we do have a suite of policies and actions in the land use element that in various ways would guide and inform what goes into the zoning code. But yes, the zoning codes, districts that go into, under each of these designations, would be able to refine required setbacks, specific height requirements, density limitations, floor ratio, open space requirements, and so forth. So the land use designations kind of set the range and the maximum thresholds, and then the zoning code builds and refines from there.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'm interested in what went into the thinking on the office side. I know this presentation is largely about residential and mixed use, but that went into the recommendation to increase office from the current Measure Y five stories to up to seven stories.
I'll start, and then maybe Joanna might have some further background on that. But my understanding is some of this took place before I was with the city, was that we were looking at equivalent intensities, whether it was for residential, mixed use, or office. And so along with the high for mixed use and residential, we also looked at relatively equivalent intensities for office in areas that were adjacent, and in those high, close to transit areas, and larger opportunity sites.
Yeah, that's totally accurate, and I would just add that, so we thought it would be easier to have some, sorry, I just put a cough drop in. I thought it would be easier to have some consistency across the categories, so that we're not jumping around in what height they allow between different categories. And we also wanted to reflect some of the existing buildings on the ground. San Mateo does have office buildings that are consistent with what's allowed by the office high, high two category. So that enabled our land use alternatives to reflect existing development already in place.
Okay, thank you very much. And my final question regarding other policies, and you shared one based on prior council direction about labor and apprenticeships, et cetera, and so on. Are there any other policies that are included in general, recently completed, general plans up and down the peninsula, that we are not looking at, that we should be as part of this general plan update? Just want to make sure we're not missing something along the way.
Were you asking that with regard to kind of the labor and wage standards, or just in general?
No, in general. I mean, I look at the labor and wage standards as one large area that has been recommended we add more to in the general plan. So are there any other major areas in other general plans that have not been addressed in our general plan? Just more, but want to make sure we're not missing out on something that we really should be talking about that has not been brought up here.
The general plan team has worked to be as comprehensive as we can in looking at good example policies, and I know Placeworks has experience in a lot of different general plans up and down the state. So we've looked to their knowledge and insight to help guide a lot of what is going into our general plan, as well as our team's experience with peers and other jurisdictions. So hopefully, what is coming out in the draft general plan is very comprehensive and inclusive, but we're always open and looking for other areas where we could improve or address if maybe it's not done thoroughly or comprehensively enough. But at this point, we're hopeful that what's being proposed is very comprehensive.
Okay, great, thank you. And thank you to everybody doing the work here so far. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, just in terms of understanding the work that's gone into this over the last four years since 2018. Would you characterize this process as a pretty staff-intensive effort?
Yes, very much so. I mean, there has been a lot of work that's gone into this, especially during our community outreach and engagement phases, but yes, there's a lot of staff resources as well as consultant support that's been put into this general plan update effort.
So like thousands of community members have engaged in this process. Do we have an estimate of the number of community members or community contacts that we've made?
By estimate, it appears we've been able to make contact with over 5,000 residents throughout the course of our outreach and engagement activities.
And that's in addition to the statistically valid survey that was conducted?
Yes, that wouldn't count, the folks engaged as part of that, or folks who have received citywide mailers or outreach, but maybe haven't then responded or directly engaged with our team.
And so for some folks who might not be familiar with what a statistically valid community survey is, do you mind just sharing, you know, what does that mean for a layperson?
So this is where the city would engage with a polling firm, and they're going to go out and they're going to engage with the community and ensure that the sample size is equivalent to statistically represent the community. So I can't speak to in great detail the methodology for doing these surveys, but I knew to know the practice, which is industry standard, works to set standards that allow for engagement with all aspects and demographics of the community representatively.
Thank you. And about how much money has the city spent over these last four years? What would your ballpark estimate be for the general plan process to date?
It would be tough to specifically quantify without going back and reviewing, but we've easily spent over $4 million between staff and consultant and other materials and outreach practices as part of this process.
Thank you. And then, so we also are running a parallel effort to do the housing element, which is to zone for this regional housing needs allocation, this RENA six cycle, is that right? Which is between 2023 and 2031. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so how is the Measure Y, what is the analysis of Measure Y in our housing element? How are we characterizing Measure Y as it pertains to housing production and specifically affordable housing production?
The housing element did, that was locally adopted, does identify a path forward for achieving RENA allocations plus a buffer within the Measure Y constraints, but we do identify Measure Y as a housing, and particularly affordable housing constraint, because as was noted before, because of the lower density limit that is set, it limits the number of affordable units that can be produced, and it does require additional land to produce the number of units we need to meet our RENA cycle.
So by our own analysis, it seems that Measure Y is actually working against our goals of producing affordable housing. I'm just curious, because like, we're in a very tough position right now with the I'm just curious, because like we're we're in a very tough position right now with the housing element. We have gone through now a couple of rounds, have not yet been certified. I'm curious, just from an optics standpoint, what would what do you believe or what would you anticipate the state's reaction to be if we were to say roll back the land use, the land use goals or or definitions in terms of lowering them at this stage?
It's hard to project, but I think what we've seen to date is that all facets of a community's actions with regard to housing appear to be factoring in to the state's decision and consideration of their housing element. And obviously, the the general plan update, we did identify it as an opportunity to unlock more housing potential within the city. And so we we made, obviously, we can't make firm commitments about the outcome of the general plan and the housing element, but we did identify a commitment to proceeding through the process and identified an opportunity for more housing if the general plan were to be update adopted, and then there was a successful ballot initiative.
So from an optics standpoint, it could work against the city in terms of passing muster with HCD?
It it's hard to to say.
Okay, and and so if that were the case, remind us again, like what is, what are the possible consequences of not getting a certified housing element?
Without a certified housing element, we are subject to loss of local control with regard to our zoning regulations. We are also are subject to loss of grants and other state funding that is provided, depending on on how it's structured. But I think the the big one is the loss of local zoning control.
Definitely. Okay, and so, let's see, I think. I think at this point, those are some of my questions. Actually, I, if you don't mind, I'm curious to just kind of hear from from my fellow council members, just to kind of get a a lay of the land. You know, I, when I, this is now my fourth year on council, and last, when measure Y was on the ballot, the council unanimously voted to oppose it. And I was among, I was on the council and entered that same vote. And I'm I'm just curious, in terms of the council members today, you know, what was your position on measure Y? Did you take a position on measure Y? And and if you did, what, you know, what was your reasoning? I'm curious to hear from council members. Council member Hedges said no?
I did support measure Y when it was on the ballot.
I did not support measure Y in the 2020 vote.
Deputy Mayor Nash?
I did not support measure Y, but I also did not support measure R. And my belief had nothing to do with the content. It was the fact that I thought that land use should be decided through community discussion and not on a ballot measure without initial, you know, just decisions. So it was not related to the height limits, it was to the process. And I think as a result, we've had a very good process.
That that's encouraging. I guess I do have one other line of questioning. I think that anytime we're talking about housing, it's actually really important to center that conversation and bring it back to community need. And so, you know, Zach, I was hoping you could share some information or some data and just in terms of understanding and servicing where we are in the community as it relates to the the housing crisis and affordability crisis.
So you're asking about cost burdened households or that that are paying a disproportionate amount for rent? Based on data in our our housing element, over approximately 50% of our renter occupied households are considered cost burdened, meaning that they pay more than 30% of their income income for rent. And then of that, 25% do pay more than 50%.
If I may, because I'm the mayor now, I get to ask these questions. You know, I'm just, I'm really curious to hear from other council members. What is what is your either personal experience with the housing crisis? Or what are you hearing from the community? I think that it's it's important for us to share our perspectives, the learning that we're doing. You know, we have all eyes and ears to the ground. And and so I think that that's actually a really important part of this conversation in terms of us sharing with the public what perspectives we're holding in in this conversation. Would anyone like to go first?
Thanks. Well, you know, when measure Y was on the ballot, there was also two huge housing developments, actually three, in my neighborhood. And that was, you know, a lot of concern with the neighbors. I think if measure Y was on the ballot again today, I may not be on the same side of it, or I may be somewhere more in the middle. I can tell you that, you know, there is a lot of frustration in my neighborhood that two of the three developments that have been built, you know, even though they have affordable housing units, they they also have very high vacancy rates even now. And and that's a frustration, you know, for the neighbors is, you know, we've got these big developments that have happened, and yet we still have very high vacancy rates in in those two buildings. And so, you know, I I think, I think we need to help figure out how to get developers there. And I think that that's really what it comes down to is, it's if we're going to build these bigger buildings, we've got to make sure that we're we're getting the affordable units that we that we need for our community. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. Thanks.
Can I wait, just to, just so we're talking about perception versus fact, you know, I think it's really important, you know, when we're, just to talk about vacancy rates in this in this conversation. Because you raised it. In my understanding is that even at this point, you know, post COVID, the vacancy rate for residential housing is very low.
Correct. And and a commercial or a, a, you know, someone who has properties generally wants to have a vacancy rate of five to 7% at most. And you take, for example, Station Park Green, and these numbers are about six months old, but last year, they they predicted that, or they estimated that the vacancy rate for Station Park Green last year was still over 11%. And, you know, it's, to me, that's frustrating. I mean, I'd like to see us go back to the developer and say, hey, if you have empty units, let's make them more affordable units. You know, it's, it makes more sense, it doesn't make sense to have brand new apartments that aren't full. And then, you know, what I've seen just in the last month and a half is, you know, three blocks away, there are one bedroom and two bedroom units that have 11 people living in them. And, you know, that just blows your mind. I mean, it's, it's, it's very frustrating. And and so I I'm all for trying to figure out how to fix the problem, but I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, I appreciate that contrast and and the frustration. And we're all here to try to solve that problem, so I appreciate that. Council member Hedges?
First, let me go over the zone that I work in and what I see. So I'm on the board of Samuku, and that's a labor and community nonprofit. And we provide rent to our members who have a hiccup in their economic standing, yet they're working every day and are going to be evicted if they can't pay the rent. I personally have paid the rent for church members that were in the same position. So I'm looking at how we can keep the people that actually do the hard work here, because we're losing them. It's very hard to get a home health care worker now. So I'm going to slightly up the the floor ratio and height for some of the study areas and what I do. I'll be more specific when we come to it. But I'm not going to on the office, because what what's happening is, as soon as we start getting more units, more office buildings are built, and our housing jobs ratio is blown. And that's part of what is driving these large arena numbers. And if we can lower that dis- distance between our ability to have a jobs housing ratio, then I think we're going to start seeing lesser and lesser calls on us to up the housing numbers. So I actually think I know what I'm doing, others may not. But but I'm going to to get more specific when the the mayor wants me to.
Well, I am a renter, a longtime renter in in the city. I I happen to be the the one renter at the moment on the council. I feel very fortunate to still be renting in the city of San Mateo. It it was good fortune indeed. I, you know, the Great Recession came. My parents had lived here. I had lived with them for a long time, and they lost their their jobs and and their home. They decided it it would make more sense to sell the home at that time and and purchase a a more affordable home outside of the state. And I decided, I I had happened to get a a full time job that paid just enough, I feel, to allow me to remain here as a renter. And I took advantage of that opportunity because I grew up here and I wanted to stay here, and I I love it here. And thankfully, my salary has increased to allow for me to stay as a renter in the city despite my rent increasing every year for several years to about 60% of where it was in 2010, for example. And I felt like I was one of the lucky ones, because a number of people saw increases far beyond that. And so, you know, my experience includes going to a number of community meetings and city meetings here at City Hall over the last decade, in which I heard folks who sound similarly, you know, in similar circumstances to what council member Hedges described as as being very close to not being able to afford living here. And indeed, as I went through my council campaign and spoke with constituents and organizations within our community, over and over and over again, I heard, we want housing, we want the ability for people who work here to live here. So I feel that's where I'm coming from, and that's my experience.
Deputy Mayor Nash, do you have any experiences or perspectives you'd like to share?
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor Lee. And I join with my fellow council members and everyone in the city, as the the survey said, that affordable housing is very important and is a priority of ours. I also look at the people and the voters who passed measure Y. And measure Y's predecessor, measure P and measure H, was one of the early efforts to include affordable housing as part of the requirements for building in San Mateo, and we have been a leader since then. So I think it's very important to underline the fact that everyone is interested in building more affordable housing, whether you have lived in San Mateo all your life, and you're you're wanting to age in place, whether you have children and you want them to be able to stay, whether you are new to the community or wanting to be new to the community and cannot enter. So I think that's very important. I think what we all have to work together to figure out is how do we get there? And what we are being asked tonight to do is talk about our general plan, and within that, we can do so much. The housing element is a different thing. It's in parallel with the general plan, but it is a different document. And the general plan is a broader document. So I think we have demonstrated, as Deputy Director Dahl said, that the housing element that we approved for submission to HCD, there was a way forward to satisfy measure Y. Deputy Director Dahl has said that in the next cycle. It's doubtful that is happening, but that is what we are dealing with tonight. And I think it's important to go back out to the voters with any recommendation we have with a very extensive education campaign and getting their opinion, because I hear from so many people that they want to give their input, but one minute at a city council meeting is not enough. We're looking at a document that's very difficult, even for us to decipher, much as staff has tried very hard to make it work. That is not enough, that we have to go out, and if we want to go to the voters and say we believe we need to make some changes, we have to come with a fact based logical plan that incorporates updated opinion. And I think that's what we're talking about here tonight, and that's what Deputy Director Dahl is looking for in terms of feedback. How do we want to go to the voters with any changes we might want to make with with around measure Y and and what do we want to do with the general plan?
I'll just share what, you know, some of the the lens that I hold. As a mom who has raised both my kids here, born and raised Samataans, the housing crisis has impacted my kids' education. I've seen numerous teachers move away from the school district. My my kids, just in their one elementary school career, have seen four different principals. I see the impact organizationally and from the challenges that we have for recruitment and retention of municipal government employees, and particularly our our first responders or public safety employees. I I talk to business owners that are working in retail and struggling to keep any employees at their business for lack of, you know, adequate housing options. And, you know, and then also, I I think about the seniors that I that I visited when I was touring with Ready Wheels and and meal meal delivery services for our seniors. Many of seniors that I've spoken to feel very much trapped in their homes. They're they're on fixed incomes, they can't afford major upgrades, and they have no options for downsizing. And and the cost of aging in place is significant. So so, you know, I I feel, I feel, you know, very, I think, attuned to the the concerns of the community, specifically to my neighborhood. I think it's important to surface that, you know, 30 years ago, when measure Y was what was, you know, back then, measure H, I think that it actually played a very important role, specifically for my neighborhood, which was just starting to see a wave of displacement of of our African American community. And virtually no checks on development, no standards for community benefits, and and almost no policies in place to support some of the other Ps in terms of protection, production. And and and, you know, the word equity hadn't even been invented. So so there were fundamental concepts that I think we can apply now 30 years later that are very important. And the tool that was instrumental in in actually bringing, you know, revolutionary, inclusionary, affordable housing policy to San Mateo at this point, 30 years later, is is actually the same tool that's limiting affordable housing production. And so, you know, as policymakers, it's really important to, you know, to think about the evolution of of policy in, you know, in context, in the context of now and in the context of what serves the future. And so, you know, what might have applied and been very important and significant and valuable 30 years ago, I think, is, you know, you need to apply a lens of today and tomorrow. Personally, I have a housing story. My own family was housing insecure for many years during my childhood. I moved multiple times and and ultimately ended up in affordable housing. And so, you know, I myself have benefited from the 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 good graces of of housing policy that when it's done correctly. And I think that that's a really important personal story that I share, because if I didn't have the benefit of a roof over my head, have the benefit of a roof over my head, I would not be where I am today. I would not have graduated high school. I would not have gone on to direct to nonprofits. I would not have gone on to build a business and sell a business. I would not, I would not have been able to dedicate my life to public service. And that happened because I was able to be uplifted by community, a community that cared enough to support a safety net. And that's what housing is, is a safety net. So I just, I think that it's important when we have these conversations that we actually bring our whole selves to the conversation and we share with community what our learnings are so that we can, you know, we're not bots. We're not androids up here. We're actually, you know, we're living and breathing the same air and we're driving down the same streets and shopping at the same grocery stores. And, you know, our kids are in the school district where we're thinking about retirement, hopefully not too soon, Rich. So, yeah, I think that that's an important part of how we have these conversations, right? So with that, it's time to open it up to public comment, but I ask, are we, is it time for a break first? How are we doing? Do we need a bio break?
[inaudible]
All right. Should we power through?
Try.
Okay. Let's keep going. How are we doing for public comment?
Give members of the public an opportunity to raise their hand. If you're participating in Zoom, please raise your hand if you wish to speak to this item. If you are attending the meeting in person, please deliver a yellow speaker slip if you wish to contribute to this public comment section. Give a few more moments for people to provide their slips and raise their hands.
At the moment, I am seeing 17 public comments on this item. I looked at the council to provide direction on the time allocated for each speaker.
Two minutes.
I'd suggested that we make sure, especially if it goes over 20, that everybody gets two minutes. This is a complicated discussion. We should not limit anybody to one minute.
We will go with two minutes. And we will begin, for the efficiency of contributing to public comments, I'd ask that if your name is called and you're in council chambers, please form a line. We will call the next three speakers. So the first speaker we will bring to the chamber here is Moses Vela, followed by Ken Abreu and Jean Dale.
Thank you all for being here. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I also want to thank you for the hard work you're all putting in for the general plan. It's very important. My name is Moises Vila. I'm a field representative with Carpentry Union Local 217 servicing San Mateo and San Mateo County and the working men and women in construction. I want to bring your attention to the importance of labor standard language in a general plan. Worker exploitation, underground economy, that is the cash payment of wages, out-of-area, out-of-state workforce, tax fraud, does not pencil out, which translates to rather, I much rather use an unrepresented, much more exploitable workforce. Those are just some of the issues that are out there daily in the construction world when cities don't have labor standard language and policies in their general plans or in their cities in general. Why is this near and dear to my heart? Because I'm a 20-year carpenter in the field, so I know what it's like to be part of an organization that cares for me, for my family, for what I do day in, day out. State-certified apprenticeship program, such as the one that the carpenters are part of, and it's a joint labor management apprenticeship program that doesn't cost the members any money or taxpayers any money at all. Local hire, giving those apprentices the opportunity to work locally where they live also. And they also have the opportunity to continue in their path in construction, their new career. Prevailing wage, it's more like a family-supporting wages, because that's really what it is. It provides a better quality of life. Access to medical coverage, this is important because construction is one of the most dangerous sectors out there, so workers need to have this available to them and their families. Please consider adding labor language to your general plan. I thank you all for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ken Abreu, followed by Jean Dale and Lori Watanuki.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ken Abreu, 40-year resident of San Mateo and today also will be representing the Sustainable Land Use Committee of the Sierra Club chapter. We've sent the Sierra Club a number of letters regarding the general plan. I'll just touch on a few of those that I think are relevant points for today's discussion. In terms of density, we need to go up in density. Affordable housing is in a crisis. The only way to really solve it over the long run is to up that density. And I think that that's the way you have to go. Terms of height, same thing. You need to go up in height. In height for housing, I think Councilmember Hedges has made a good point. We don't need a whole lot more office space. We need housing and adding the height there is very important. And adding the height along with the density allows us to do the third very important thing. Open up open space. Get some parks. Get pedestrian walkways. Get bike paths. Take those creek areas along Laurel Creek and along San Mateo Creek and open those up to natural areas so we can improve the environment for everybody in this city. Last but not least, I think, in terms of additional things you think about, is streamlining the processes and figuring ways to lower the cost for building housing. It's ridiculously long to do this now, so it doesn't get done. We've had a lot of housing approved that is not happening. So I think that's the other thing to look at in the general plan. What can we do to streamline the process, lower the cost for developers in a reasonable way so we can get more of this housing built? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jean Dale, followed by Lori Watanuki and Harry Moody.
Good evening, honorable city council members. It feels like city council continues to be on a mission to abolish Measure Y. It feels that way. May not be true, but it feels that way. I don't agree with Mayor Lee that Measure Y works against San Mateo's goals for housing. I believe staff just stated current RENA numbers can be met in our general plan with Measure Y. Maybe it is doubtful for the next round of RENA numbers will be met by Measure Y. But all that means is that city council and staff need to continue to work with San Mateo residents to optimize housing options. Possibly like looking into giving some type of incentive for converting office buildings that are vacant to residencies. And to add to Deputy Mayor Diaz Nas's comment, there has not been sufficient clarity with meetings, maps, and discussions for deciding on what parts of Measure Y in the current staff presentation voters can agree or disagree with. So I very much encourage more participation. I take my hat off to staff and city council for the amount of public comment you have had in the last four years for our general plan. I haven't followed up with other cities, but you guys have done a really good job in doing that. And I would just encourage you to do a little bit more with some type of meetings where there's color visuals and other information presented and an opportunity for residents to interact with staff to get a better understanding of what is currently being presented. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lori Watanuki, followed by Harry Moody and Elaine Salinger.
Lori Watanuki, District 3 resident. We need a new map with the new densities and heights to reflect Measure Y and density bonus projects. There are over 18 projects, which are in various stages in the downtown with approved heights and densities. The public needs to see all the new projects that are being built, as well as those that are in the queue in various stages, on a map with more details on density and heights and study Area 4. Measure Y and its predecessors have worked well for the last three decades and has not hindered developments. In fact, there are nine developers who have built multiple projects in San Mateo. Wendy Hill has built seven. I would like to see more emphasis on housing over office and to see some conversion of the vacant office buildings to residential. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Harry Moody, followed by Elaine Salinger and Owen Day.
Thanks very much. I came here with a very simple suggestion request, and that is to raise the height limits, both in all parts of the city. And the reason I favor that is this guy spent most of my life in New York City. I don't want to live in New York City. I want to live in San Mateo. I'm 78 years old. I'm aging in place. This is the place I want to be. At the same time, I recognize that there's a lot of people who cannot afford to live here. And I want to say this, along with my suggestion to overturn Measure Y and to raise the heights limits, I had no idea until Rob Newsom started speaking, until you, Mayor, started speaking, just how passionate and engaged the council is on these issues. I'm really impressed as a citizen and I spent my life, I was vice president for academic affairs for AARP in Washington. I spent my entire life in the nonprofit world. I know nothing about housing. I have nothing to contribute on that score. But I have things to contribute on aging. And I would volunteer, and I'll follow up on this after this, to talk to people and see if I can't do something. I don't need a job. I'm retired. But I'm really impressed by what this council is doing and thinking about this. I just wish there were a way of communicating this better to citizens, because this stuff is really complicated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Elaine Salinger, followed by Owen Day and Ted McKinnon.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and council members and staff. Thank you all very much. My name's Elaine Salinger. I've lived in San Mateo for 33 years. We desperately need new housing, particularly low-income housing. And I want you to, I want to encourage you to focus new housing close to public transit. I also really believe that we need to increase the height limit and the density, as the first speaker stated, to keep open space, to have protected bike lanes, to have walkways for pedestrians, which will generally improve the quality of all of our lives. So we need to put people together near transit so they don't need to get in their cars. And this will reduce traffic stress, reduce air pollution, and reduce greenhouse gas pollution. It is crucial to meeting our climate goals. So in order to focus our new housing near public transit, we will need to create higher-density housing. And I do want to mention that Lisa Tanner, whom I think probably all of us know, recently sent out an email saying that State Senator Scott Wiener created Senate Bill 10, a tool to set aside Measure Y for specific building projects. And if she's right, we don't need to wait for a citywide election on Measure Y. This would avoid paying for a costly election to rescind Measure Y. Now, I wrote this before the presentation tonight, and what I learned is that you believe that we can rescind Measure Y by waiting for a regularly scheduled election, so we don't need to pay for a special election. You're not nodding your head, but that's what I think you said. So I was very happy to hear that because I don't want to spend a whole lot of the hard-earned money in taxes. But I do want you to know that all we need are four votes from the city council in order to do this, according to Lisa Tanner. I also want to thank four council members for coming out tonight and saying that they do not support Measure Y. So, and I want to thank all of you who came out and said that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Owen Day, followed by Ed McKinnon and Bart Pantoya.
Good evening, honorable members of council. Great to see all the community interest in discussing this. It's good to have an open dialogue. I think there are a couple of things I want to reiterate, and then there are a couple of ideas I want to echo. I think the first and most important thing is that we are in the middle of an affordability crisis. And it has been stated tonight by city staff that Measure Y hinders the production of affordable housing. That is, that is a fact in my mind. And I think that it is important to continue to say that and to continue to make that known. No matter what the rhetoric from other people is, that is the fact. And I think that's important to recognize as we move forward in discussing Measure Y. I think that it's really important to increase height and density, to create more open spaces, to preserve affordability. And I think Elaine Salinger made a really great point about the climate impacts of not producing affordable housing, not producing high-density housing, your transit, people are in their cars more often, that increases fossil fuel production, yada, yada, yah. I also think that it is important to say, the city council does not support abolishing Measure Y, as some have said. I think that that's not, they may be against it, but I think the voters have made a decision. And I think that that's something that the city council will respect. And the last thing I want to say is, as a question, it's that people say that Measures H, P, and Y have worked in the past and they have worked now. And I'd just like to pose the question, who have they worked for and who have they not worked for? And how can we start to work for chronically underrepresented communities through housing policy? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ted McKinnon, followed by Bart Pantoya, and finally Mitch Spiegel.
Good evening, council, Mayor Lee. I'm Ted McKinnon. I'm a 24-year resident of District 5 in San Mateo. And I want to start off by reading directly from the HCD letter, response to the housing element regarding Measure Y from September 28th of last year. "The element must describe the impacts of Measure Y on height and density restrictions as a constraint on housing development and affordability. The element must add a program to include outreach and mitigation measures for the impact of Measure Y on housing development throughout the planning period. The element should analyze the measure as a constraint on development based on site suitability for development." So I was a little amazed to hear that, you know, I thought tonight's meeting would be about that and not about the next RENA cycle. And we're not in compliance right now. And to me, the message here from HCD seems pretty obvious. We can have a compliant housing element, or we can have Measure Y, but we can't have both. And if our housing element is non-compliant, Measure Y can and will be superseded by the builder's remedy anyway, along with everything else that comes with non-compliance. So my recommendation is that we simply acknowledge this reality and commit ourselves to ridding ourselves of the restrictions on development and affordability as described in the HCD's letter that Measure Y imposes as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Bart Pantoya, followed by Mitch Spiegel and Michael Reagan.
Good evening, council. My name is Bart Pantoya. I'm the Business Manager, Secretary Treasurer of the San Mateo County Building Trades Council, representing tens of thousands of men and women in construction here in San Mateo County and many who live and work here in San Mateo. I wanted to address the proposed policy and action bullet points, and mainly the first two, the apprenticeship program. So one of the things it mentions, talking about implementing, having developers evaluate to implement a program. Basically, apprenticeships already exist. We have a vehicle for that. Since 1939, the Department of Apprenticeship Standards was created. So that's something that you could definitely use instead of asking a developer to try to develop one or create one that's already there. And when it comes to the local hiring, living wage, target hiring, which is really good and very important, one thing that concerns me is the use of the living wages. You know, what is that in San Mateo? To live in San Mateo, provide for yourself, for your family. That's where, as a building trades, we would consider prevailing wage as a... That's where, as a building trades, we would consider prevailing wage as a, especially for certain classifications of work, being a standard that we could use for that. Because it's, as you know, chasing with minimum wage, trying to trace inflation and living wages, you're behind, right? We're talking about hearing stories about people not living check to check, or multiple checks to multiple checks. Being in construction myself for over 20-plus years, you know, a dual-income household is the only way I've been able to survive, and my partner survived in the Bay Area. So that was a concern of the building trades, so in that policy. And of course, any questions you have on apprenticeship, you can always contact me at the Building Trades Office. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mitch Spiegel, followed by Michael Reagan.
Hi, council. Appreciate it. Mitch Spiegel, District Five. I ran up in District Five. I oppose the adding of language to the general plan to subvert Measure Y. Measure Y, as it's been passed and reaffirmed time and time again, is what the city wants, right? Is that there's been measures passed time and time again to try to strike it down, and significantly, the city comes out saying that, hey, we want this. I echo that current Rena numbers have been met under Measure Y, that the city should focus their time and resources on a general plan that works with those measures. And I also agree with Councilmember Hedges that we need more housing, especially affordable housing and missing middle housing. Developers looking to build 10- and 12-story office buildings, mixed-work, or mixed-use retail and luxury housing doesn't increase affordability. You could add, you could add 500 units of multimillion-dollar penthouses, and the carpenters still wouldn't have a spot to live, right? It's just how it works. The bottleneck that I see with so much of the development here is the intense cost to build. We would look around and we would see five-story buildings, multifamily all over, if they could do it affordably. They can't. I think we stick with what the people want. They want Measure Y. They want to keep Measure Y. And until the council and the city and the whole group of us comes together and say, hey, we don't want this, I think we got to play with the rules that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final in-person speaker will be Michael Reagan.
Again, how you doing tonight? I was going to say one thing, but I think I'm going to say something different this time. Measure Y. I've worked, I've lived in San Mateo 45 years, and I've worked up and down the peninsula from San Francisco to San Jose for over 50 years. And getting rid of Measure Y is not going to reduce the cost of living in the area. Most of the cities up and down the peninsula don't have a Measure Y, and the rents are as expensive as anywhere else. We just live in a very expensive area. There's no getting around it. It's the elephant in the room. And unfortunately, there's not much we can do. So getting rid of Measure Y is, what is, what is the benefit? The benefit is for the developer. The developer wants it. And developer has been pushing it. They spent hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars on the last election. They got our last city council to support them with other Measure R and the evils of Measure Y, but the citizens read it and believed in it and passed it. And I do believe that with this new city council, the four new members on it, that the developers are waiting to see, and they have obviously, that you guys are against it also. And now that they've got the foot, their foot in the door, they're going to work it. So it's going to be up again for election to defeat it. But it's not going to make housing more affordable, unfortunately. So somehow, we're going to have to figure another route. But I don't like all this Measure Y talk. It's really, I thought, for my many years living here, that it's made San Mateo a better place to live. And I've looked at other cities up and down the peninsula, and I've seen a lot of development that is not conducive to the enjoyment of the lifestyles that we paid so much to live here. So please consider that.
Thank you. We will now move to our Zoom speakers, beginning with Michael Weinauer. Michael, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So we submitted, this is Mike Weinauer speaking on behalf of SMERX AMITAN for Responsive Government, the committee behind Measure Y. We submitted a letter, so I'll just try to summarize the key points here. First of all, Y is not a separate document. It is integral. It is part and parcel, and it always has been part of the general plan. So it's meant to be woven in there. And if you present a draft general plan that doesn't include it, that will be tantamount to sanitizing it and really, I think, ends up deceiving the electorate. The second thing we'd like to point out is that, in terms of the 10 study areas, we did that already. It was called Measure R, and you called them carve-outs. And Bohannon spent a million and a half dollars and had council support and put out a lot of misinformation about it, and it failed by a lot. So let's not do that again. We do agree that we need to have some of these workshops that show proposed versus existing land use. So that's really important, and it's important, I think somebody brought up, that it needs to be in layperson's terms, right? Because most people don't have any idea about FAR. We have to do some education there. And it's got to be, you know, I call it Bohannon's shenanigans just in time for St. Patrick's Day. At their most recent workshop, Reimagine Hillsdale, they laid out three different possibilities where they showed no buildings taller than five stories, and they had little sketches. So if people are really in support of these huge buildings, why can't they actually just show them? And then the last thing I'll say is that, is that, look, the council now has this unique opportunity to come together. The Y coalition has always been willing to compromise, contrary to a lot of what people say. Make that happen. Come to us with a general plan that we can all get behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be A and L Tanner. Please unmute your mic.
Good evening. It's Lisa Tanner. Councilmember Lee said she'd continue to fight against Measure Y even after her constituents approved it. Councilmember Lee, you have been asked more than once if you will recuse yourself from Measure Y-related discussions or vote, and the public awaits your answer. Let's remember that Measure Y required affordable housing long before it became the thing to do, though it's more aptly called below-market housing. And let's also remember that developers no longer have to mitigate any new building impact. It's too soon to be discussing compromises tonight. First, you need resident buy-in, allowing us questions and answers with staff directly as we view current options, close up for better understanding, including height-density bonuses. Second, with council recently approving maximum-growth options against voters' Measure Y wishes, you're now compelled to create a valid measure to try and get the same discerning voters to reject the height limits they recently approved. This will require your serious consideration and compromise. Failure means you'll have to abandon all the general plan update work, update work to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Ken Chan. Ken, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, members of the San Mateo City Council. My name is Ken Chan, and I'm the senior organizer with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We work with our committees and their leaders to produce and preserve quality of affordable homes. I'd first like to extend our appreciation to staff for their presentation and report regarding this item tonight. On behalf of HLC, I'm here to express our support to overturn Measure Y. While it has a stated goal of making homes more affordable and improving the quality of life for your community members in San Mateo, it has actually done quite the opposite since its inception 30 odd years ago. This measure's most restrictive limits on density only applies to homes and not to commercial development, which, unlike housing for your community members, receives next-to-no pushback when up for a decision. This has in turn exacerbated the jobs-housing imbalance that your community is experiencing in this moment. In addition, Measure Y limits this and future councils' ability to produce effective solutions regarding affordable homes, and it impairs economic recovery for your city and its small businesses that rely on your residents who could have lived in these potential homes. We urge you to overturn Measure Y so that all of your residents can have a safe and stable place to call home, and subsequently, take advantage of all the opportunities that your city has to offer. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is listed as call-in user one. If you are calling in by phone, please unmute your mic. And if you wish your comments to be recorded on the record, please state your name.
Yes, my name is Karen Harrell, and I hope you all received the comments that I sent in. I won't repeat them. For some of us who have been hanging in here with the general plan issue forever, there's a real Groundhog Day feeling about this. Maybe we can kind of break out of this and move forward. I was also very interested in hearing that there have been 5,000 people who have participated in this process. I ask you to look around the room. People don't stick with the process, and I think it's a question as to asking why. The bottom line is, people don't understand. And unless we can get some sort of open house, answering people's questions, it doesn't make a lot of sense to move forward from tonight. I know from my 14-years experience on the Planning Commission that draft meetings, study meetings, end up being almost set in stone, and there are very few changes that are made once something is a draft that goes out quote-for-comment. So I strongly urge you not to make any major decisions tonight. Let's get this thing out to the voters, and let's get this thing out to the people so that they can understand what it is that's being discussed here at City Hall. There's one thing I wasn't planning to talk about, but I'm just appalled at the idea that everyone seems to be hanging their hat on increased density, because with density bonuses, you get all of this wonderful extra affordable housing. There's absolutely nothing that assures that more density is going to mean more affordable housing, particularly since the state law says that none of those bonus units can be required to be affordable. They will not be affordable. So you're still stuck with the original, whatever it may be, 15 units, and you get all of this market and above housing, and that's not what we need. What we need is the affordable housing. So this whole concept of having more and more doesn't really get us more and more affordable housing. And it's a great idea to put in strong ideas about having setbacks and requiring various amenities and the like. Nevertheless, every time those bonus concessions come in, they can be wiped away. There is no way to have a firm decision that something cannot be changed. So, great idea, but it's, the state has taken that out of our, out of our hands. So I urge you, take a pause now, get this whole issue out to the public in an open-house kind of way where people can go around and get their...
Thank you. Can you please wrap up your comments?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be David Lyte. David, please unmute your mic.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I also am in the group that questions the, you know, I've listened to the whole presentation, whether just increasing the height limit and opposing Measure Y is somehow going to address the problem of low-income housing. I don't think it will. I think that the height limits are very generous, especially with the density bonus, and that developers and city councils should be able to work together to address, to address the problem of affordable housing under the current laws that were voted by the, by the voters. And, you know, I just, I don't want to spend too much time here, but people mentioned Station Park Green Apartments. That's very close to where I live. I've lived in San Mateo for 85 years, sorry, since 1985, not since, for 85 years, sorry. But Station Park Green, it seems like the ideal, you know, project, based on some of the presentations that were just presented with the cartoons and everything. It's five stories. It meets Measure Y. It's got a lot of green space. It's next to the Hayward Park train station. There's a bike path that goes by there. But, you know, we heard that the, that the percent occupancy, there's a problem. And I would just leave with a question. Does anybody think if Station Park Green, instead of being five stories tall, were eight or 10 or 12 stories tall, that the percent occupancy would improve? You know, I think that the Measure Y is already very generous toward developers, and we can address affordable housing under the current regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Lisa Vandevort. Lisa, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, city council. My name is Lisa Vandevort, and I'm a District Five resident. Before I begin, I want to say that I 100% agree with many of the commenters this evening, especially those made by Mitch Spiegel, Michael Reagan, and Karen Harrell. But on to my comments. I sent you a letter earlier today asking that you incorporate Measure Y into the upcoming general plan and to not go forward with a ballot initiative to change it. And just to make it clear, my letter was not based on misinformation, but on facts. So I take offense to the general characterization made earlier. And looking at public comment on Strive San Mateo going back to February, there were 48 letters in support of incorporating Measure Y into the general plan, and only seven asking you to exceed it. And that was as of 4:00 p.m. today. So it's clear that there is significant ongoing support of Measure Y among San Mateo residents. I want to thank Councilmember Nash for her quick, thoughtful, and respectful response to my comment tonight, or earlier this afternoon via email. She said that about measure, to exceed Measure Y heights is necessary because we need to plan now for more housing in seven years, and that Measure Y will limit that. But post-COVID, we have commercial buildings that sit empty. We have new housing that sits empty, and the landscape has changed. With that comes an opportunity to think outside the box, similar to what Aaron Fellers said so eloquently earlier. So I maintain that we can address this later if and when that time comes. Meanwhile, I respectfully ask that you approve a general plan aligned with Measure Y, because that is the ordinance that is in place and should be the guide going forward until it sunsets in 2030. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Gary. Gary, please unmute your mic.
Thank you very much. My name is Gary Germau, and I did address a letter to the council. Probably people there haven't heard it. But in any case, basically, despite all the money spent by developers to promote what they wanted in our city, we've continuously passed the original Measure H and the Measure P and the Measure Y, and it seems that the city of San Mateo residents would like to see it not look like San Francisco, if you will, and be kept to a lower range. It seems to me the real problem is that affordable housing is needed, and it only comes as a percentage of what the limit that you build is. In other words, the number of units that you build, it might be 10% or 15% or whatever it happens to be. But the way to get it higher is not to increase the total number of housing, because in reality, I don't think we really need more housing, housing, more non-affordable housing, let's put it that way. So I think we should really address the problem, which is affordable housing, leave the height limit the same as the people want, and find a better way to get a larger percent of what is built be affordable. And I think it's going to take some creative thinking and working with the people, but I think that would be a far better solution and give us what we need instead of what we don't need. And I will be sure tonight, and thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Tasso Sagravas. Tasso, please unmute your mic.
Good evening. Tasso Sagravas, live in District One. There are two ends to this housing, which is, one end is rampant reckless building of lots and lots of high-rises, high-density high-rises, which is uncontrollable growth. The other one is no growth. I'm opposed to either of those ends, but I am in favor of smart growth. And that's what Measure Y is about, smart growth, where we can control our growth destiny consistent with the infrastructure that we have in place that can support growth, and Measure Y allows for affordable housing. And so we address that factor as well. Now, we should look at building more affordable housing, but make it real affordable housing, not just rampant reckless growth of high, you know, building of high-rises, where, like Station Green, that has, you know, an occupancy rate that has vacancy at this point, and the vacancy is there because the rents are so high. So you're not really making it affordable, even though you're building lots of units. I want to challenge the report that talked about how building high-density housing around transit will reduce vehicle miles traveled. Vehicles miles traveled is a factor of the number of vehicles and the miles they travel. And even if a small percent... And even if a small percentage of 100 people living near transit don't use a vehicle, the other 80% still have a car, which is an additional number of cars on the roadway, and they will be traveling miles. So building housing near transit doesn't necessarily reduce the overall vehicle miles traveled, and therefore increases pollution and emissions in our, in our environment and also our greenhouse gases. So I would urge you not to change the will of the people and to remain and hold true to keeping Measure Y as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Jordan Grimes. Jordan, please unmute your mic.
Yes, good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor. Jordan Grimes, lifelong resident of District 3. I've now been engaged in and attending meetings about our general plan update for half a decade, so I'm very glad to see us in the final stretch. On the topic of Measure Y, I think it's imperative that the city put a measure on the ballot to finalize the general plan process and allow San Mateans the opportunity to raise heightened densities past what Measure Y would allow. Density is required for affordability and for inclusivity. It's why every nonprofit affordable housing organization and social justice group in the area opposed Measure Y to begin with. In 2004, when Measure Y, then Measure P, was on the ballot, it passed by more than 9,000 votes. Two years ago, it passed by just 43 votes, a statistical tie. The writing is on the wall here. The measure is far from sacrosanct, and it's entirely unclear whether or not many people even understood what they were voting for, as evidenced by the results of the statistically valid True North Community sample conducted in 2022. That community survey showed a supermajority of San Mateans, 68% of respondents, would be in favor of heights around transit capped at eight stories, while 63% supported up to 12. And the unfortunate reality, the cruel irony of Measure Y, is that those displaced by the high housing prices it has wrought over the last 30 years will never have a say. On the specifics being discussed tonight, I'd strongly urge the council to consider up to 12 stories in the high zone. I'd also urge you to consider higher densities, if not higher heights, in both the medium and high categories. And then lastly, on vacancy rates, I'd note that Station Park Green, as of right now, per their website, has just 14 available units of 600. That's a vacancy rate of 2.3%, just 2.3%. That rate is similar citywide per census data. So I'm very curious where information to the contrary is coming from, and hopefully we can clear that up. Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Chris Bressau. Chris, please unmute your mic.
Hello. My name is Chris Bressau. I'm a 20-something-year resident of San Mateo, and I live in District 1. Couple of things, some, some great comments tonight. I'd like to just say first off that, you know, we need the, the city council to negotiate with the developers, not with the citizens of San Mateo. You know, all, all the, the discussion here isn't getting at the root problem, which is affordable housing. And, you know, I'd like to echo that the points of caller one and caller two are particularly important. Affordable housing is needed, and it should not be an afterthought. The developers should be basing developments off of some significant fraction of affordable housing, not using it as a lever to drive outsized developments just by exceeding the limits of Measure Y. There's no reason to throw all the rules out just so some developers can have kind of carte blanche to build whatever they want. Now, affordable housing is needed, but the people of San Mateo want Measure Y, and it's strongly supported for a very long time. So I respectfully request that the, the city keep the current rules in place and work with developers to build more affordable housing with the existing rule set, which is successful at a couple of developments that have just been noted recently. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be George. George, please unmute your mic.
Yes, hi. I've heard a question asked previously, and I've never quite heard an answer to it. Maybe it's somewhere, and I just haven't found it, and maybe you can point me to it. But when people talk about affordable housing, they talk about it kind of in generic terms, unless, you know, but it's about people. And when people, and when, when somebody mentions the people that they envision in affordable housing, they usually mention firefighter, policeman, nurse, construction worker, restaurant worker, you know, people who are seen as needed in the community and contributing to the community. And I'm just curious, how is affordable housing actually allocated? We've built some. Who has it gone to? Is it that category of people? Or is it, you know, how does it work? Is it a lottery? Can, you know, my cousin Vinnie in Staten Island just dial up and say, "Hey, I want to live in San Mateo, and I can get affordable housing, and I'll move there"? Now, of course, that's exactly what I think Bruce Springsteen's father did when he moved to San Mateo and became a bus driver about 40-something years ago, which I guess is constructive, so. But I'm just curious, what is the actual process that this affordable housing, the low-market rate housing that we talk about so admirably, how is it actually allocated? Who gets those units? Who has those units today? I mean, are we actually attaining what we want when we think we want affordable housing? So if somebody in city council or staff in, in their comments can say, "Oh yeah, just go to this website, and we'll tell you exactly who got those units", I would love to hear that answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Roisin. Roisin, if you could please unmute your mic.
Hi, City Council and Mayor. Good evening. My name is Roisin. I'm 20 years old. I've lived here my whole life, and I go to the city, the College of San Mateo. I work, I, I volunteer at the Citizens Climate Lobby. I've been involved with them for about five years now. I've held several demonstrations, and I've known about 200 members in my community who are active in the youth group. And I'm pretty sure all of us are worried about being able to afford houses. I don't think I'll ever be able to afford a house in my lifetime, and I'm considering moving out of the Bay Area because of affordability. So this is definitely an issue that impacts me. And if we want to see waitresses serving our food, if you want people like me working in childcare, we need to provide affordable housing. So I am a proponent of affordable housing and high-density housing that is near public transportation. It's incredibly important that it be near public transportation because that decreases emissions and makes cities more walkable, and it saves lives by stopping climate change. I mean, people who live in these areas are going to have to deal with air pollution, and by decreasing the amount of cars and using more public transportation, we can limit that and lower rates of asthma and heart conditions caused by air pollution. So I hope the city council will figure out a way for us to get this high-density and affordable housing in San Mateo so that I and my, my peers, people my age, can continue to live here. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Lori Hayter. Lori, please unmute your mic.
Hi, I just wanted to say that Measure Y has worked for the community. We live in San Mateo because we don't want to live in an area with high-rises and undue congestion. There are a lot of seniors that live in San Mateo, and unfortunately, they can't walk everywhere. They need to be able to drive. They need to have a place to park their cars. And I think Measure Y worked for the residents because it tried to maintain the city while allowing development to go forward, as it has. But Measure Y has not worked for the developers, the unions, and the tech companies, big tech, who are actually funding YIMBY Action. We heard quite a bit from YIMBY Action in the last few months on San Mateo development projects. So I think it's time for the city council to turn their focus to what the City of San Mateo residents want instead of being unduly influenced by outside interests. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. With that, we'll close public comment and break for five minutes? Okay, see you back in five.
Yes. All right, thank you. We're going to begin. Please be seated. So I heard a couple of questions that were raised during public comment, and so I thought maybe this is a good time to just kind of clarify again some of the facts that we're working with. So just to be clear, we are looking at a two and a half RENA cycle for the general plan process. Is that correct?
Yes, the general plan has a 20-year planning horizon, and so with the state's housing cycles of eight years, that would be approximately two and a half housing cycles in that period.
Great. And under our current RENA cycle number six, it is true that we can meet our current RENA cycle six numbers based on the, you know, the assessment that the city has done and the housing element that was submitted, that our valuation and assessment at this point is that we can meet current RENA six cycle goals without any changes to zoning. Is that accurate?
That is correct. We've identified capacity within our existing zoning to meet our current RENA plus a buffer.
Great. And in terms of the, just the number of previous, just to get a baseline for last, the RENA five cycle, for example, our RENA six cycle requirement was to produce a minimum of like 7,000 units. Is that accurate?
Yes, 7,015 units total.
Plus a buffer. And what were our RENA five cycle requirements?
I would need to look at the exact numbers, but I mean, it was a little over 3,000 units.
Great. And so it is true that we actually did exceed our target for total units produced in RENA cycle five.
I believe as of year seven, we were at 81% of our total. Our annual progress report for our eighth and final year of this housing cycle will be coming to council in a couple of weeks, but I haven't seen the final version of what our numbers look like just yet.
Okay. However, in previous RENA cycles, have we ever met our affordability requirements or goals?
I have not looked at them specifically, but generally speaking, no, those are generally very, very challenging targets to meet, at least for past cycles.
So just, I think, generally speaking, you know, staff is saying that we have never met our affordable housing goals in, you know, in our institutional knowledge to date, right?
If you're talking cumulatively, I don't know if in past cycles there was any particular affordability category we may have met, but I do know that overall, historically, that has always been the most challenging part of a housing element is meeting those components.
Right. Okay, so just to recap, we, it seems that we are not actually producing the prerequisite affordable housing goals or targets that are set by the state. And that has significantly impacted the affordability crisis in San Mateo cumulatively over, you know, many decades. So we keep on slipping more and more behind in terms of, you know, the demand for affordable housing increasing and us falling short every single cycle in terms of producing the affordable housing. So that is, I think, an important fact to surface when we talk about how affordable housing and affordable housing production relates to the current policy that's in place, which is, you know, Measure H, P, and Y, and how that has, in fact, not achieved the affordable housing goals that were set by the state. The other thing that I, you know, I was hoping you could clarify for the public and for the council is how does increasing density work to produce more affordable housing?
Your affordable housing percentage, so the city of San Mateo has a 15% inclusionary requirement, is based off of that base density. So if your base density allows for 50 units, then it would be 15% of those. If your base density allows 100 units, it would be 15% of those. Projects that then get additional units on top, none of those are required to be affordable. So that's why the higher the base density, the higher corresponding number of affordable units you can get from that project.
And so for folks that might not have been in the weeds, when we're talking about base density, that's what we're talking about in terms of setting the zoning to establish that base density. Is that correct?
Yes, those are, that's one of the pieces of information that's up for consideration tonight, is the base densities that would go into the general plan.
Okay. And then, you know, I know that a major issue in the community is traffic. And I just wanted to better understand, you know, from your perspective as, you know, a land use expert, and I'm joining maybe a few on the way, and also, how does, how has traffic impact sort of helped or hindered by concentrating density and growth around transit?
Ideally, you're by creating an environment where it's very easy to access public transit that can reduce a resident's need to rely on a car to get where they need to go. And if you also place housing in proximity to jobs and to retail and other commercial uses, that also can reduce, if there is a driving trip, the length of that trip, or the ability to bike or walk to that amenity. So proximity and concentration and availability of transit all can contribute to reduced amount of time or reduced miles traveled in a vehicle.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be great. And then Joy and I can add to that as well.
Sure, thank you. So we've heard throughout the general plan update process that transportation and traffic congestion are major local concerns. So this was something that we looked at as part of the alternatives evaluation, then the process that Zach described in the presentation earlier. And so that analysis looked at vehicle miles traveled or VMT, which we've talked about under the, we looked at it actually under all three alternatives as well as under the existing general plan. So even with the allowed development under the existing general plan, and certainly with the range of the three land use alternatives that we considered, all of those would increase the amount of development that's here in San Mateo today. More people would be both living and working here. And that does increase the number of people that are driving here. That's not inaccurate to say. But what we saw was that when we consider vehicle miles traveled per capita, meaning how that affects individual travel behavior, the concentration of jobs and housing near transit that was most strongly represented in Alternative C led to the greatest, the lowest amount of vehicle miles traveled per person. So the total will be higher in the future than it is today, the total number of people driving, but more people will have different options to make other choices rather than driving.
Thank you. And then another question I heard was, was just a clarification that, you know, the intent or the decision point is not in any way to put forward a special election in November of this year. It is, in fact, to align potentially an election in November 2024, which is a general election. Is that correct?
That is correct. I mean, ultimately, it's council's prerogative, how you would want to bring this forward, but what we're proposing is a timeline that would align with putting the ballot measure on the general election in November of '24.
Thank you. My favorite question is, could my cousin Vinny move to an affordable housing unit in San Mateo? And what is affordable housing anyway?
Affordable housing is based on income. It starts with income criteria. And so anyone who's looking to purchase an affordable unit or occupy an affordable rental unit needs to meet certain income criteria. And there's different thresholds. It starts with the average or median income for the county, and then based on that, you have different income categories that go from there. So the low income category is up to 80% of that median income, very low is 50%, and then you have extremely low, which I believe is at 30%. And then the moderate income units, the city can set that threshold. It can be anywhere from 80 to 120% of that median income. So that's the first step. And then you can set other criteria for preference, or if there's a lottery, for how that person ultimately gets into those units. But you have to meet a verifiable income, or you have to provide verifiable evidence of the income that you're making to meet that criteria.
Thank you. That's helpful. You know, and one of the projects that we did, that we, that my previous council approved was the largest affordable housing project in the history of San Mateo, where we dedicated public land and $12 million to produce a 100% affordable project, which will reap over 220 new affordable units downtown San Mateo. And one of the decision points was setting the area median income and affordability threshold. And so I wanted to ask Kathy, who's been following this, she's our Assistant City Manager, Deputy City Manager?
Assistant.
Assistant City Manager, to describe, you know, who, what's the profile of somebody who might live in those future units? You know, are they, are they our teachers? Are they our police dispatchers?
So for that project, and also for many affordable housing projects that we built in the past, the city of San Mateo has put in place a preference in the lottery for people that live and work in San Mateo. That particular project, Kiku Crossing, is also unique in that because the land that was used was funded through redevelopment funds, which are shared property tax funds from taxing agencies throughout the county, that that project will also include a preference for public employees across any public agency, including the county of San Mateo, which includes hospital workers at the county hospital center, the school districts, both the elementary school district and the high school district, even the mosquito abatement district employees. So, but that is unique to that project in particular, but the preference for someone that lives or works in San Mateo currently, at the time that they're applying for the unit, is something that we've traditionally done on many projects.
And remind me again, how long is the waitlist for affordable housing in San Mateo?
I do not know the answer. I just know it's much longer than the number of units that are available at any given time.
It's in the thousands.
I'm unfortunately not familiar with the exact length of it, but I know it's, again, very long.
Okay. I remember it's in the thousands. And I have, I have many folks in my life that actually are on that list and have been on that list for years. So I guess the answer is it depends on who Cousin Vinny is. Does, you know, is Cousin Vinny living and working in San Mateo, right? Does Cousin Vinny have an area median income of 80%? Those are, those are some of the criteria. Can Cousin Vinny actually wait for multiple years on a waiting list to actually get into affordable housing and continue to stay and hold a job here? Or can Cousin Vinny actually, you know, need, does Cousin Vinny need to move away to even to have a life and a livelihood with a roof over his head? So, you know, those are some of the decision points that our young people are looking at right now. Does anyone else have any follow-up questions before we get into comments? No? Okay, who wants to kick off comments?
First, I just want to take a little aside to talk about transportation and housing as a combination. I'm talking from a point of view that I helped MTC develop the guidelines for transit-oriented development. So I live near Bridgepoint. The 251 bus stops at the corner and goes to Hillsdale Train Station. The FCX bus stops in front of my house and goes to downtown San Francisco. There are two shuttles on either corner from my house that go to Caltrain and one, two blocks away, that goes to BART. I seldom get in my car for groceries or for, I do for big groceries, but for small groceries, I can walk to it. I walk to all the restaurants. I walk to get plumbing supplies at the hardware store. So it depends on where somebody decides to live. And units close to transportation draw people who want to walk and bike and take public transit to work. Otherwise, most people who are not willing to do that wouldn't move there because there's always a limited number of parking spaces in those types of developments. So saying that, a lot of people believe people won't take transit or walk, but they do. I do. I'm 80 years old and I do. So I'm sure that most of the young people who, it's almost before the pandemic, crowded onto Caltrain with me, I was the only old guy going to the city. So there's a new generation that will do it. So I wanted to just talk a little bit about compromise. I heard Michael Weinauer, and it's not the first time that I've heard him say that, and I think he's an honest guy. And he says there's a compromise out there, and I believe there is. And I'm going to tell you how I feel, and I would more than willing to talk to anybody about other views, to get to the point where we don't get a builder's remedy, where we don't stop losing the big awards from the state and the ones that come through MTC from the federal government, to do the infrastructure that we need. Because if we don't have an adequate housing element, that's exactly what's going to happen. So I'll go into this a little bit. First of all, I just want to say, before I get into the housing part of it, I want to keep the size of office buildings down. And I've used as a bellwether, there are office buildings well above seven stories where I live, one of them 13 stories. Since Measure H, there's been three office buildings built that are seven stories, because seven stories is the limit where I live. So I'd be willing to apply up to seven stories for office buildings in the 10 study areas that we have, but no higher than that. And I want to talk about mixed use. I would be for High One, five to eight stories, but that comes with a proviso. Mixed use means we have housing, but we don't have 10 units of housing. We have 30 to 40% of housing in that mixed use. Otherwise, there's no reason to have mixed use. You're just talking about office again. And we have to stop this cycle of building more jobs than we are building housing. As far as it goes with vacant office buildings now, there are four around me that are vacant because people have been evicted. They're changing them to Life Science, and that's a trend here. And the good thing about Life Science is it doesn't bring the number of people to the office that the old-fashioned office buildings do. So we'll have less density of residents in those office buildings, less cars that commutes to. So that's where I'm at with office buildings. And that's where I'm at with mixed use. Now, I really went back and forth on High and Medium High for one location. That's the Hillsdale Train Station. Because that's, if we were going to do it, that would be an excellent site for it. But I finally landed on High One for the Hillsdale Train Station. And quite frankly, in the other study areas, I think High One is okay too. When I got on the council, I promised to protect R1 developments. And I think this is actually is a way to do it. Now, when I say I'm for High One, I want those developments step back to get to that height away from residential units. So, and let's just talk again about Bridgepoint. So with those seven stories, if somebody's building housing with the appropriate number of blow marker eight units, we will be at nine stories already without a change in the height or density. So again, I use where I live as a guideline to say that this can be done, because it's been done well where I live. And again, on the R1s, very low And again, on the R1s, very low, and Low 1, maybe depending around downtown somewhere, Low 2. But again, I want to protect the R1 neighborhoods. And if we can get to these RENA numbers with Measure Y, then I think without affecting the R1 neighborhoods, we can get to them in the future with High 1. So that's my feeling. But I'm, as I said, willing to compromise if we can get to the RENA numbers. And again, I want to say that I have met, I have not met with any developers, but I have met with a lot of citizens. One of them was Michael Weinauer. And he had also in that meeting said he would be willing to compromise. And I think he's an honest guy. So he was a major activist in Measure Y. So that's my comments.
Which, sorry, do you mind just clarifying again? I'm not sure I was totally following what specific amendments you're proposing.
Did you get everything I said okay, Zach?
I have a running list. I believe I caught a number of the items.
Okay, good. I didn't want to confuse you. You've got to do it.
What did you hear, Zach?
Well, let me tell you what I said.
Okay.
So I said that I don't want any more than seven stories for office. I said that I wanted mixed use of High 1, five to eight, as long as there's a high number of units required with below-market rate units. I said that I'm for High 1 in all of the study areas, but I toyed with High 2 at the study area at the Hillsdale Train Station. That's pretty much it, really. I did a lot more talking than details.
So you're saying where, basically everywhere except potentially the Hillsdale Mall?
Yeah, but I finally landed on High 1 there too.
Oh, so, okay.
I toyed back and forth with the two. But I just thought High 1 will work there. And again, I don't want high office buildings because it's just going to keep killing our ability to get decent RENA numbers.
And mixed use, you said mixed use, high?
High 1.
High 1.
Five to eight stories.
Five to eight stories.
With a proviso that we have a large number of below-market rate units, and I would like to, and housing units of about 40%. I don't know if you can codify that, but.
Just to clarify, when you say, are you, 40% of the project would be housing or affordable housing? Because we would have to.
A large segment of affordable housing, but 40% overall. I don't think you can get the 40% affordable and have it buildable financially. And just to clarify, one more thing. There's about 2,000 units in this city that have been approved and nobody's driven a nail on. And there's one that's fallen out of contract. And there's another that's just a deep hole that they seem to have walked away from, which I'm sure is really inconveniencing the neighborhood.
And just to chime in, on the issue of an inclusionary housing ordinance, I mean, there are limits on, you know, what we can require in terms of a percentage of the units that can be affordable. There is also on top of that the buildability issue and whether it'll pencil out.
Yeah, well, penciling out's the important thing. So it doesn't matter what you can approve if it can't be built. And again, I don't think there's going to be many buildings over seven stories because that's about as high as you can get with wood-framed buildings with the new pressed wood. And quite frankly, you get into a lot more money when you get into concrete and steel. And you get into a lot higher labor costs, too.
Can I ask a clarifying question of Zach? Because in our housing, in our land use goals, I believe, and also in the housing element, we articulated a goal of establishing a residential housing requirement for mixed use. And I just wanted to, like, if, I don't know at this stage, or I guess I'm asking at this stage, about how appropriate is to set a target of 30, 40, 50, 70%? You know, not having gone through the due diligence of studying that goal.
We do have a goal, both, it's a draft policy in the land use element, and then there is a specific policy and associated programs in our housing element that speak to evaluating requiring residential, a residential component in mixed-use projects. And I think even further, would we require all mixed-use projects to have a residential component? We are go, staff is looking to bring an economic consultant on board to kind of evaluate that question in more depth. And since it is identified as a council priority for this coming fiscal year, we do have plans to move forward with that initiative. So we are looking to bring something before council once we've been able to do more background on that in the coming fiscal year.
So knowing that that's going to be pursued, I mean, is that, is your proposed amendment hard and fast, Councilmember Hedges, in terms of establishing benchmarks?
I thought I mentioned the word "to compromise" while I was talking. I'm willing to compromise. These are my goals.
Okay. Just want to get us clear.
Yeah.
Okay. Who else would like to share their thoughts?
Deputy Mayor Nash, I can't see if you have a hand up.
I do. Thank you very much, Mayor. And I apologize for being remote. I wish I could be all there with you today. But I'd like to support a great deal of what Councilmember Hedges said, particularly around compromise. First off, I want to thank all the staff and everyone who's done so much, including everyone from the community for all these years who've worked on the general plan. And people are here tonight making public comment in person via Zoom or via email. This is not easy. But I'm actually, maybe it's because I'm not sitting in the room, but I'm seeing things and I'm hearing words that make me optimistic. I hear a lot of people on all different sides of the issue talking about compromise. Give us something that's real, something we can work with. You know, if we're going to be successful, we have to come off of all or nothing and find those compromises between the conflicting policies that demonstrate to our residents that we're listening to them and hear what they're telling us all across the spectrum, while also showing the state that we're complying with their mandates. It's not an all or nothing, but I think we're making a lot of progress, and I'm feeling really good about that. So just to recap, voters approved Measure Y only in 2020. It's the law of the land. And absolutely any changes to Measure Y must be approved by voters before being implemented. But I also heard a lot of Measure Y supporters tonight saying, "We always have wanted to compromise. Our big issue was making sure we had final say on what got approved." And I think that's something we can work with. We've also, San Mateo, worked with lots of things. And as you mentioned, Mayor Lee, Kiku Crossing is a huge example of how successful we can be when we come together with developers, community, the state. I mean, it's not often that we have that kind of land, but we used it, I think, extremely effectively. And we're going to have 100% affordable housing downtown, which is not only going to help people improve the environment, but it's going to help our small businesses. So that's where we need to build up and build dense. We've had to comply with housing regulations. But we also approved our housing element, as we all know, for the next eight years. And staff led us through an exercise that showed we could do it within current Measure Y. We know that going forward, if we have the same kind of RENA numbers, we're going to have to talk compromise. But right now, staff is working with the state to get ourselves certified, and we really need to make it a priority. So where a lot of the question is going to come is how do we make the rest of General Plan 2040 pencil out from a housing perspective? As we've said, the next cycle and a half of RENA is going to be really tough to do, if at all possible, within existing Measure Y guidelines. We also know we all want more affordable housing. And Councilmember Hedges spoke so well about how we need to rebalance the jobs-housing imbalance in San Mateo. I think that's something I've heard everyone from all different walks of life talk about. And so we really need to get very serious in the general plan to do that. But as Councilmember Hedges also said, we have to maintain single-family zoning in San Mateo. So predecessors before us, and Mayor Lee, you were part of this, came up with the 10 study areas that we have today to increase housing between now and 2040. And the other thing that nobody's talking about tonight but is really important, that the city does not build housing. So we can talk about how we have not hit all of our goals, or we have, but all we can do is zone for it and then make it as doable as possible. That means streamlining, as the Sierra Club has mentioned. It means, you know, getting the community involved and working between the developers and the neighborhoods. It's a challenge that all California cities are dealing with, whether or not they have a Measure Y-type regulation. So we need to think about that. Staff has recommended to us tonight that we increase current height limits in limited areas in the study area up to either eight or 10 stories. And they've taken into consideration the fact that density bonuses will probably mean that they could go up as high as 10 or 12 stories if there's enough affordable housing created. Just to think about it in real terms, 12 stories is more than twice what current Measure Y limits envision. That's a huge leap up from today. And while that's something that, you know, when you're talking about what that means, that's where I think we need to start talking about compromise and coming up with a plan that can be explained to residents and people can get behind. I think it's really great that staff has come up with two levels of every height, you know, whether it's medium or high, mixed use. It's great that we're focused on building downtown and near transit. It's great that if we can have a lot more public land, but we don't. So I am looking at compromise. I can see, as Councilmember Hedges said, having eight stories, High 1, in very limited areas with potential affordable bonuses that could add a lot more units. But for me, High 2, 10 stories with a potential go up to 12, is just too high and goes beyond the limit of what compromise is all about. I also very much agree with Councilmember Hedges that mixed-use High 1 and residential High 1 should be used as the spine of new developments. We've talked a lot about Reimagine Hillsdale, and I'm going to the virtual session in a couple days. I know they talked about it this past weekend, that it's all about put the high buildings in the center and then step it down. And when it comes to El Camino, I agree, High 1 in certain areas, as staff has recommended. I disagree with High 2, but I also would want to see very strict setbacks implemented around these high-level residential and mixed-use buildings so they don't crowd out the neighborhoods or create a tunnel along El Camino, which I see happening in other towns. You know, we also talk about creating more substantial open spaces if housing can go up. And I'm encouraged by Deputy Director Dahl talking about how we can really do that in our zoning. Because I think if we don't have substantial open space and not just pocket parks, it's not going to be a great environment for everyone. We saw what happened in Bay Meadows during COVID. People were spilling out into the streets, and we had to close down streets so that families could have their kids have a place to play. We need to plan so that doesn't happen. And I know I would also love to see zoning talk about building more two- and three-bedroom apartments, not just studios and one-bedroom apartments. I know that's where you get the density. But as I said earlier, I want people to come here to work, to raise a family, to age in place. And just doing it on studio and one bedroom is, it just won't do that. I leave it to the experts to tell us how we can encourage two- and three-bedroom apartments. But we need a variety of housing to achieve, as our friends in Move San Mateo have said, eight to 80, or as the Age Friendly Initiative says, age-friendly lifecycle. And then finally, and this is something that we talked about in the Blue Sky session, I really think it is so critical that we have detailed and objective design guidelines implemented as part of our general plan to encourage new buildings, whether they're residential, mixed-use, or office, to echo the architectural elements of our historic buildings and create harmony rather than stick out without any consideration for neighboring buildings or the city as a whole. We have the opportunity to be the leading city on the peninsula, not just based on size, but based on how we look, how we feel, what we do. And having these objective design standards that echo our history will help us unify the look, feel, and approach of our city. To Councilmember Hedges' comments about office buildings, I appreciate what Placework said and what Deputy Director Dahl said about trying to maintain what's already there. But I really have questions about why we need to maintain seven-story limits on our offices. Why can't they be at five stories, you know, as they are throughout most of Measure Y? Why do we want to encourage further skewing the jobs-housing imbalance in San Mateo? And as Councilmember Hedges eloquently put, we're just going to start that vicious cycle of having more jobs and then having to raise the limits more. Let's do what we can, as Councilmember Newsom talked about, to convert all these, you know, infill commercial buildings into residential. I know you can't do it with everything, but I think there should be a huge initiative to figure out what we can do as we were redeveloping some of these strip malls and the like to do the conversion and keep office buildings to the five-story limits as envisioned by Measure Y. But at the end of the day, we have to come up, and it's our responsibility as a council and a city to come up with a fact-based, logical plan behind any changes we make. Eight stories is a lot more than five. But I think I can come up with a story and a fact-based plan that can reach out to people who might think that's too much. Let's sit down and talk, as so many people said tonight. I'm thrilled about any new tools we have, whether it's maps. I would love to build mini models like we were doing back in the beginning of the outreach, the community outreach, that show people what this might mean. Because I know myself, I think staff has done a great job to try and show the discrepancies between Measure Y and what's being proposed. But we need people to be able to touch and feel and walk around it. And then I think they can, they can start to get excited about it. I've heard a lot about that in terms of Reimagine Hillsdale. We've still got a lot of work to do, but let's use these tools. We've got between now and November 2024 to do that. And we probably will get a lot more good ideas that we haven't even thought about. I don't think we can ever have too much discussion. So in summary, and I apologize for going on, but this is so important. I am supportive of what staff is recommending. I would recommend getting rid of the High 2 in both residential and mixed use. I agree with Councilmember Hedges that what we can do to encourage a much higher percentage of residential in both of these categories is critical, particularly downtown, that we should keep office to five stories and not up to seven, and that we should include a lot of very specific zoning so we have setback requirements, so that we have open space requirements, so that we include objective design that knits our city together, and that we do a lot of real, hands-on, open houses with all sorts of tools. Because I believe people can see a vision and everyone wants San Mateo to be even better in 2040 than it is today. And that means having more young people, more people who couldn't even imagine living here now. But it also means preserving what makes our city so great. So thank you very much.
Please, go ahead.
So I wanted to, I had not yet touched on the labor right issues that were in the general plan. So I wanted to do that, but also wanted to add, and I forgot to add it when we were talking about the different study areas. There is a study area around Wisnoms Hardware, what used to be called Wisnoms, where some of the oldest houses in our community are, the brown houses there. I would really like to see, in a general vicinity around there, not to raise the heights tremendously. And if we do, to really pare them down away from that neighborhood. I had made some notes on the labor rights issues that were in the general plan. And I think it's, the language is placed in the housing element, and I think it should be in the land use category, not the housing element. It makes more sense because it's a wider swath. And the apprenticeship program, it's just stated as an apprenticeship program. That's not complete. All apprenticeship programs should be certified by the state's Department of Apprenticeship Standards. To give you an example, I think it's the Associated Building Contractors have tried to set up their own apprenticeship programs, but because of their lack of understanding of the type of training, it's never been certified by the state. So if, it's just a joke if you don't have something that's really true. So if it's just a joke if you don't have something that's really trained people. To give you an example, I was an apprentice sprinkler fitter until I was injured. I went through five years of apprenticeship training with very high math in in hydraulics, which was very important for that discipline. So that kind of training can only be done by people that really know what they're doing. That was done for me through the University of Pennsylvania. So as far as the prevailing wage, I really agree that it should be catched more as as a prevailing wage than a living wage, because prevailing wage in in all industries, like the grocery industry and the other industry, is really in California, the standard. If you just say prevailing wage, it's what anybody says it is. That's the bulk of my comments. Now, thank you.
So if I may, I have a comment about, I would caution the council about using prevailing wages. Prevailing wages are required for public projects above a certain threshold where it's paid for out of public funds as opposed to, say, private development projects. So I think that's why the language is more specific to living wages and not prevailing wages. So I mean, whether that can be fleshed out in some other form is a different question, but I think there's a reason why it doesn't specifically refer to prevailing wages, and I would recommend against that.
Well, there are wages that prevail in all industries, like in the grocery industry, they're standard. Even the few non-union grocery stores here pay it to avoid unionization.
Well, by the term prevailing wages, I mean the state law definition of prevailing wages in the labor code?
Whatever you want to call it, but it needs to be provided along industry norms.
I think we can come up with a different term, perhaps.
Through the mayor. I just want to mention that I've heard quite a bit. I appreciate all the public comments we've received. I've heard things ranging from listen to the will of the people, maintain Measure Y, don't give in to developers. I've also heard overturn Measure Y and that we should be seeking taller heights than are currently being proposed. That we need to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, that we need to find more affordable housing and more. I agree with a lot of what I've heard. It's important to consider how density bonus affects a little bit of what we're looking at with regard to these land use designations and that it's confusing to understand exactly what's existing versus what's being proposed. In absence, with that not being directly linked to it. I agree that proposing an exception to a voter pass measure is not something to take lightly and not something that should be determined just by the whims of a five person council. Our focus should indeed be on housing and increasing affordable housing in our city. And from that, I just believe that this, what is being proposed tonight, is is a compromise. It's a product of community input that attempts to keep, I feel, a lot of the spirit of Measure Y intact in our city. Seeking responsible growth by concentrating it near our transit areas, preserving the R1 neighborhoods, while giving more Samitanans present and future, but present Samitanans as well, an opportunity to live and stay here. I believe that what's being proposed tonight by staff is a thoughtful compromise between jobs and housing already, as written. When if we if we look back at the numbers in the land use alternatives and preferred scenarios, we're we're seeking to increase housing units more than jobs. Twenty one thousand nine hundred sixty housing units to fifteen thousand two hundred fifty five jobs. So just what we have proposed is is going to work toward getting us closer to a more amenable jobs, housing ratio as proposed. And, you know, I do just, while I feel I appreciate the comments of Councilmember Hedges and Deputy Mayor Diaz Nash relating to, you know, not wanting to focus on increasing office necessarily in our current condition. I also think it's important to keep in mind that we're going to want jobs for those who come to live here. And and I I would submit that I I feel that I'm a little concerned, as I believe the mayor mentioned in her comments with picking too many knobs to push and and tweak without the thoughtful, lengthy process that led to where we are today. I'm not saying we can't compromise on anything, but I I just think we want to be very careful in that regard. And so to that, and I I feel I'm probably going to, I I in fact am going to suggest that we pursue what we have written instead. And and with the knowledge that it is still a draft and and there may in fact be some changes that that occur going forward. I also just want to mention that the city has has an interest in potentially shifting some of the uses of our land, even now. The Waters Park Development, I think, is a good example of effectively converting an office park into housing. And I I predict there will be more of this in the future. I also just want to note that I think the city has wanted a variety of office spaces for different sized companies who are interested in making their headquarters in the city of San Mateo or otherwise having a big imprint. And I I that makes me think back to Bay Meadows. And I remember some of the discussion around Survey Monkey coming. And, you know, in that discussion, we we learned that we, you know, San Mateo does a pretty good job of and, you know, for entrepreneurs, startups in our downtown and and around. And but it didn't necessarily have as many of the types of office spaces like the one that ended up getting built for Survey Monkey. And so making that available gave us a new a new neighbors and a new and a new asset to our economy. So I I think that for that reason, I'm wary of of capping down some of these office figures without further study. We learned through the process that we've been going on this journey that we've been going on four to five years now. As staff has mentioned, I feel in the presentation, that that Measure Y as written today might be able to get us through the next eight years as we look into this draft housing element. But I, you know, what's important when we look to 2040 and beyond, right? When we look towards Samitanans' needs beyond 2030, because I don't know about you, but I would like to continue living here past 2030. You know, to 2040 and beyond, Measure Y as written today does not appear to meet our needs, the needs that we're predicting, the needs that we're aware of at this time. And now is a good opportunity to try and plan ahead, right? That that's that's partly why we have this 20 year general plan update process. If we if we go ahead with, you know, a limit to only what we can achieve under Measure Y into 2030 and then start up another conversation at that point about where to go from there, a number of properties that could be developed between now and then may be developed and may no longer be available to redevelop. And so we might find ourselves in a situation very much like we are now today, but with even fewer potential options. You know, if Hillsdale redevelops, Hillsdale may not be in our list anymore, for example. And so that's why it's important to be thinking about what can we do, given that we're landlocked and have such few options? With with what can, how do we make sure we get exactly what we could get and need for now, 2030, and beyond? So I wanted to just mention that and also that indeed, it it does seem that public opinion on Measure Y is changing. It passed, it is the law of the land today. But it passed by fewer than 50 votes. So we're, the the city is split on this. And indeed, when we conducted a statistically significant survey a couple of years later, we learned that there was appetite for more affordable housing as as being most important to potentially looking for higher heights and densities in our transit oriented development to increase affordable housing, to reserve more land for parks, recreation areas, and community amenities, as as many commenters have mentioned tonight. And I personally feel as a longtime participant in our general plan update workshops that I I've seen a lot of that bear out in the work that's led us to where we are today from from placeworks and and the updates that that were going on under. So I also just want to point out that there are potential consequences to narrowing our focus too much at this point. If we do decide, if we if we were to decide to hew more closely to Measure Y or or abandon the plan to seek alternatives that may exceed it, and then we get to 2029, 2030 and have this conversation again, and we don't have those assets, that we don't have those opportunities for more housing to meet our revenue number, whatever it may be, then we may find ourselves having a a conversation that I think almost everybody in the room and who wrote in would find abhorrent. We may not be able to preserve our our one neighborhoods anymore. We may be feeling like we need to make tougher decisions, more radical changes perhaps to the city of San Mateo than we would want. So that's kind of where I'm coming from, where I feel like this compromise is being proposed tonight is in fact in the better interest of the people of the city of San Mateo today and in the future. It's a better compromise that can work for people who are who did vote for Measure Y. And and for those who didn't. So that was a long winded explanatory way of saying to the slide that I confirm the proposed height ranges associated with each land use designation are appropriate to include in the public review draft general plan. Although I would like to add that I agree with those who have mentioned an interest in a Reimagine Hillsdale style workshop in which the public has to engage better and in a in a simplified way with what it is we're talking about tonight. So I I hope that there's an opportunity that there's bandwidth for some for for, you know, on the next public workshop to allow for something like that experience. I I don't feel, I did attend the Reimagine Hillsdale on Saturday. I did think it was cool and 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 fairly simple to follow and and I don't think it was necessarily a ton different than than a lot of what we've done so to date of those 23 workshops that you mentioned earlier. But but I I do think you know, that I I imagine we could discuss a little bit with the staff, like what might be different between what they did and and what and and just make sure we incorporate a little bit of what was put in there if 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 different. Some people mentioned proposed versus existing. Certainly, I I did feel like it, I I felt like I could walk around the room and read and and feel at the end that I in fact understood what was being proposed, and that's very important. And I think that's it's it's no small feat, right? And if we could do something like that, I think it would be wonderful for everybody involved. To the second bullet, I I think I would just confirm direction on general plan alignment with Measure Y and a future ballot initiative. I think what's being proposed by staff makes sense to me, given the proposal. And I I might leave it at that. On the other policies, I did have a few comments. I like the spirit of the suggested policies and actions. On apprenticeship programs, as Councilmember Hedges mentioned, I I think that maybe we could just adopt something that could be a little more flexible, such as the, you know, language that the City Redwood City ended up putting in its housing element about hiring from or contributing to apprenticeship programs instead of directly encouraging creating apprenticeship programs, as has been mentioned by other commenters, apprenticeship programs do exist that I think could meet our needs. And I I think I would second Councilmember Hedges' comment that it I it's my understanding that only those approved by the California Department of Apprenticeship Standards may may meet our needs. And since those exist already, I guess I'm I would be interested in that in more flexible language there, but otherwise am interested in in something like that. On local hiring and living wage, I guess I'd just want us to be careful not to define local too narrowly, as many workers don't currently reside in the county now for reasons that have been discussed tonight. And so, you know, I don't know what the sweet spot is on that, but I'm guessing, you know, saying like within the city, of course, or even the the county might might not be broad enough to allow for what we're hoping for. I'll defer to the previous conversation related to whether living wage or prevailing wage is exactly the best, and hopefully we can find something that that seems to meet the spirit of what Councilmember Hedges was vying for. On first source hiring, we would have to make sure that there are enough historically responsible entities, both union and non-union that are within the county to sort of ensure that this would work, I think, as we are intending. It's come to my attention that several developers of current projects are are outside the county. So you know, I I guess that would be something we'd have to look into to see if if that was indeed the a good fit. I guess I'm, there's a bit of concern. And that said, if if so, then perhaps we could work with our partners at Job Train and the, you know, the Union High School District and Community College District that has the the trades introduction program to help make that work as well as possible. And I think frankly, I I like the living wage incentive sort of as is and just support it. And thank you very much for indulging my comments.
I have a lot of comments, but it's getting late and I'm going to try to not repeat what everybody's been saying, so I'll kind of do bullet points. I agree with all the labor verbiage that has been put forth by Councilmember Hedges. I share Councilmember Lorraine's concerns about contractors based in San Mateo County and employees, workers being in San Mateo County. You know, one of the experiences I've had in my own neighborhood is that, you know, the contractor may be in the Greater Bay Area, but there's people that are moving in and living in RVs for months on end. So I would like to see that expanded to a geography of maybe just calling it Northern California or giving it a hundred mile radius or something. Yeah, Bay Area region. Thank you, Richard. To address Measure Y, you know, you you've heard from what, how I was very strong for Measure Y in the beginning and and now I'm 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 still a Y supporter, but you know, to me, Measure Y was not really as much about heights and density and was more about making sure that the people have their voices heard. And I think that there is room, and I've heard this word three times from, I think, from everyone so far. from everyone so far, which is compromise. I think when we look at, for example, housing, Measure Y is compatible even really up to medium two, because if you're building a five-story, chances are with a density bonus, you're going up to six. Measure Y, for that matter, can even tie into some of the high ones with, you know, five to eight stories. Again, if you were building a five-story, it's not inconceivable you'd be at seven. Measure Y would obviously preclude the higher end of high one, which would be the eight to 10 stories. And I think that compromise is the key word. I think that high two is, to me, just too far of a reach. I don't think that we're gonna be able to get people there without doing, having another measure on the ballot and putting it back in front of the people. But I think that we can achieve medium one and most of high one with Measure Y, as long as we're doing the right work, if we're doing the right outreach. We're bringing in, you know, when we look at these study zones, there are, there's an entire tract in my district, which is the east side of El Camino Real from 92 down to Belmont border, where that whole east side of the street is extremely underdeveloped. You know, it's used car lots, there's, there's just, there's just a ton of opportunity to build a lot there and have it be in a transit zone and in, you know, great access to El Camino Real and all the freeways. I will be the first to admit that I do not think that Y is by any means a perfect measure. And I might even be willing to say that I could see it sunsetting, especially if we can work together with the people who propose Measure Y and get a general plan that moves us forward. I think what we really also want to be looking at with our, and this isn't a question, but I think with our general plan is we really need to be looking at affordability goals. Where are we gonna put our next Kikuk crossing? You know, it's an incredible achievement, and I give a lot of praise to the last city council, but we need to be looking at where the next one's going to be and the next one after that. I think really the problem isn't as much units as affordable units, and I think a lot of people have said this, but I strongly believe that that's, that's the core of this. I did mention that I think there's an opportunity to redevelop office space, and my understanding is that if you redevelop an office building that is 20 stories tall, it can be housing that's 20 stories tall. We have to obviously look to validate that. But I think that, you know, the way people work has changed, particularly with the pandemic. I don't know that we need to continue to build office space to the degree we've been doing without redeveloping office space that's vacant. And in my district, there's a lot of vacancy within offices. There's also a lot of new buildings that are being built, and it just blows my mind that we're building new as opposed to building housing. I'd love for one of these office buildings to be the next Kikuk crossing instead of another office building. I think that the state is increasing numbers exponentially. I mean, when you look at RENA cycles, it's 3,500, and then it's 7,000, and I don't know that likely anyone is actually gonna be able to hit these numbers at the degree that they're doing. And I think we need to make sure we're putting pressure back on the state that as they're increasing these numbers, they're also increasing the affordability numbers of those units. Not just make us 1,000 and have 100 of them be affordable, but make us 1,000 and have 200 of them be affordable, make us 1,000 and have 300. And obviously, we can't be the ones driving that, because that's at the state level, but our voices should be heard. And again, that's where we go back to compromise. Measure Y, whether we agree that it works or not, one of the things they talk about and is that it's affordable housing. They're, that is a group that is very much for affordable housing. So again, we need to figure out how to find that compromise. And then I think one, the last point I'd make is looking at, you know, what we're building. As we build these units, we're building a ton of micro, you know, micro units. They're studio apartments or one bedrooms. I really think we need to figure out a way and work with developers to find more family housing. I think that that is critical, because ultimately, that's what happens is, you know, people go through the process, and we are going to need more, more units that are two-bedroom, three-bedroom, as opposed to just one-bedroom studio apartments. It might look great that we're hitting our numbers, but ultimately, and maybe, maybe I am wrong, maybe the numbers have changed in the last seven or eight months, but I believe that there'd be a bigger demand if we could have, you know, units that are more family-friendly as opposed to just, you know, a single person or a couple. So, did I give everything? Let's see. I guess with, with businesses, I agree with Councilmember Hedges at the seven-story limit. As far as the, what to do with Measure Y, I think Measure Y is on the books. So I think we figure out a way to compromise and to work with people and see how that brings us in the next two years. I think that, like I said, with Measure Y, we can be hitting medium two and some of the high one density numbers. I don't think high two is, is something that we're gonna be able to get the people to stomach, not without major outreach. But I also think that, you know, I did, just like two of you, go to Hillsdale, reimagined Hillsdale this past weekend, and, you know, I thought too that it was very, it was very well-presented, but, you know, also very frustrating to me, because when I look at the development pictures, you know, they tell you tier one is within compliance of Measure Y up to five stories, and tier two is, you know, up to eight stories, and tier three is up to 11 stories, which is very similar to what we're talking about here. But not a single artist illustration showed an 11-story building. And so I think as we do outreach, it's important that we show artist renderings that say, what does this look like? And again, it can be done tastefully in such a way that it steps up and steps down, and I think we're gonna find that neighbors are gonna compromise and be okay with that and get into that eight-story range. That's, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Well, I, I wholeheartedly agree with some of the suggested changes to, to the policies regarding working more strongly with labor, requiring certification. I don't think we should be encouraging developers to create apprentice programs. That seems contrary to, to our goals. I think that we want to, we want to work more closely with established and credentialed apprentice programs that are pre-existing. And, and I think that there was, sort of, we landed on a more clearer definition of local hire. I think the catchment of the Bay Area region is sufficient. And I think that was, those were the two main things. So, you know, for me, the, this is all about, you know, what, you know, what the people want, and it will be what the people decide. And so I would like to propose that we actually go out and find out in a much more systematic and research-based way what the people actually will support by pursuing a poll. I think that when we, when we were thinking about taking any ballot measure, like including, for example, Measure CC to, to the voters, we, we did some tests. We said, this is, you know, tier one, this is tier two, this is tier three. And, and we had, we had a statistically valid professional survey done to help us work with the feasibility or to establish the feasibility and analyze the feasibility of the various tiers. And that, I found, was a very helpful way to make informed decisions about what, what the community actually will support, because we can speculate all we want, and we can, you know, we can talk about compromises and trade-offs, whether it's, you know, rolling back or, you know, or continuing with pre-existing. But I think that, you know, in a decision point at this, right now, I think the, the best path forward is to say, you know, well, we really need, we need to have a lot more full information as, as sort of a test, you know, a test of this process, a test to see where we are. You know, we've done four years of community education and community outreach. We've touched 5,000 community members. We did a statistically valid survey. I believe that, that the, where we are today in the, in the current proposal is well-supported by the community. But I don't think that we should stake any decisions on that assumption. I think that we should actually make informed decisions based on real data and statistically valid data and processes. So that's, you know, that's how I would approach this next phase, is, is folding in some sort of poll, ballot poll test to see, to see what would be supported and at what level. I heard a lot of, you know, support for objective design standards and more family, family housing. My, you know, I've been in this process for four years. I actually was started in the process in 2018 before I was even on the council. And all of those objectives are very well captured already. They are already clearly outlined in the goals of the housing element and, and also the general plan. So I think that we have accomplished a lot of, of those inclusions already. So I believe that the path forward that we're, that we're pursuing is supported by those policy objectives, as they have been illustrated and outlined in the housing element and the general plan. One of the things that I, you know, I think I, all of us spoke to was a strong desire for transitions. I think our built environment and our experience of community and the, you know, the aesthetics of, of our, our buildings are really important and well-supported by transitions. And so I, I believe that, that that was a really strong consideration and incorporation in this, this presentation and refinement. So I see us being responsive, very, very responsive to community, very responsive to, to the community, the community's desire to protect our ones. The, you know, I think sometimes it's just, like, let's go back to elementary school. We have, you know, every eight years, we're given a new set of Legos, and we have to put all the Legos on the board. And, you know, in 2031, there's going to be an entire new set of Legos that we're going to have to put on the board, right? And then eight years after that. So I think that it's really, it's really, the folks who support Measure Y and continue to support Measure Y and do that with a strong desire to protect single-family homes, I think it's actually, it's, 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 it's an interesting and contradictory path that doesn't lead to that desired outcome. Because what will happen is that the new Lego set is going to come, and, and if we haven't maximized opportunities for increased height and density in near transit, then density will be forced into other areas and other zones outside of the study areas. That's, that's the reality that we're living in. You know, between RENA cycle five and RENA cycle six, our RENA numbers doubled. And, and it, and it is, you know, I would stake my life on, on a bet that our RENA cycles will, our next RENA cycle seven will at minimum be what our RENA cycle six was, right? So that's 14,000-plus new housing units in, in eight, in, you know, 16 years. And that doesn't even cover the, the, the full horizon of the general plan, right? So if we can safely assume that, you know, two and a half times 7,000, right, that actually does lead us to this plan. And this plan protects single-family homes. So, so if, even if you are a supporter of Measure Y, I believe that the long-term, the long-term goal of protecting our ones is, is actually accomplished through this general plan as it has been designed. But ultimately, it is, it is about the desire of the people, right? And so, you know, I, I see nodding heads in terms of interest of running a poll. I think that this should be tested, the ballot should be tested, the ballot feasibility should be tested at this stage. It, I don't think that there's any amount of, of community input that will give us better information, quite honestly. So curious to hear from you, Zach.
So I've got a lot of good input. I think looking at the first question, which is the heights and densities that were before you this evening, it sounds like there's general consensus on what is proposed, with the one change being that high two would be removed. I believe I heard three votes for that piece. A lot of the policies to kind of support this growth, whether that's a residential component in mixed use, supporting open space, looking at transitions, those are all policies that are already in the general plan. We can definitely review to make sure they're reflective of the input provided here tonight. So that was for the first question. For office, right now, the proposed range for high is four to seven. I don't know if I heard three votes to change that or leave that as is.
I propose forty-seven.
So, yeah, so that, that one is the range that's currently proposed. So we, so would that be, then it sounds like there's consensus to maintain that office range as proposed right now.
No, but I wouldn't allow it to be any higher.
And then on the second question, it sounds like there's, there's general consensus around the proposal as drafted by staff, but it sounds like there's interest in looking at ways to get some statistically significant surveying on that type of ballot initiative in advance.
Deputy Director Dahl, sorry for coming in from outside. I think you can do both. I think a statistically significant poll about the ballot, absolutely. But I think what a number of us were talking about beforehand was giving people a hands-on experience so they can understand what these changes could look like. You and your team have done a great job trying to explain it in a two-dimensional perspective, but having models, having bigger opportunities, having chance to go back and forth like we did at the very beginning of this whole process, I think is really important. And I don't think they're, you know, they, they cut each other out. I think you can do both.
Yes, definitely. And my apologies, I hadn't gotten to that piece yet, but we had actually built an urban model that was, I think, underutilized, and maybe the awareness wasn't out there as well as it could have been. But Joanna and I were just talking about the idea of rolling that out again, rolling out a number of the maps and graphics in high resolution and looking at ways to make them more interactive, both on the website and looking at physical locations where we could have maybe some long-term installations to where they can be there over periods of weeks or even longer to allow for maximum engagement on people's schedules. But yeah, I think looking at how we can engage in that front and really communicate will be a key component of our upcoming outreach that goes along with the draft general plan. So, and then on the third question, it sounds, we did get some good guidance on how to refine those four labor-related policies. And I, and it sounded, the other input provided, I didn't hear anything new, but I just want to make sure that I didn't miss anything on, and guidance on other policies. But the guidance that I did hear, it sounds like we've already got those covered in various ways, but we'll go back and double-check to make sure, whether it's like encouraging family-sized housing units, we definitely have that program in our housing element, looking, making sure we're looking at open space. looking, making sure we're looking at open space or a residential component with the larger mixed-use proposals. We have policies to that, and we'll confirm that they are aligned with the direction this evening.
So do you have everything you need from us?
I believe so, yes.
Not bad. It's before midnight. Okay. So do we need, this is just a, do we need a vote or what do you need from us? Is that just direction? Are we good?
Just direction.
Okay. Okay. Now we turn to reports and announcements. Does anyone want to kick off?
Something that's been troubling me for some time, and I've been thinking about bringing it up here. I would like to partner with Caltrain and a couple of the properties here in San Mateo. And I think I stayed wrong, Caltrain. When you're walking along El Camino, you can actually see the platform of the Caltrain station, but you can't get there because it's all fenced off. We have below-market-rate housing right next to Michael's, and if we had a walkway on the back part of that parking lot and a gate to get on Caltrain's platform, they wouldn't have to walk two and a half blocks to get there by going down to 28th and back across. It just makes no sense to me, when we're talking about transit or redevelopment, that we block people from getting to the train. We have to begin to figure out how to fix that.
I think if Azalea was here, she might be able to respond to that, but I think we did do a walkability analysis to transit, and the main Caltrain station has a similar problem where if you're coming from, you're coming from the west side on Tilton, you have to walk two blocks out of the way to get, to get to the same place. And if you're on a bike, then you're walking all the way down to First and then all the way back up. Yeah, so I think, I think it might be a question that Azalea can adjure. Oh, Azalea's here. Hey, Azalea, do you want to respond to that question or comment?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, so indeed, on the TODPAP, the Transit-Oriented Development Pedestrian Access Plan, we did identify that issue in terms of inadequate access to the Caltrain station. And so one of the plans is definitely to partner. The challenge, as Councilmember Hedges noted with respect to Michael's, it is, you know, at the end of the day, it is private property. So I, I know that early in the stage when that project was being planned, that was an issue, and I think there, there were challenges there in terms of obtaining an easement. But indeed, as part of the TODPAP, we are hoping to address some of these deficiencies, and Caltrain has been open to discussing and seeing what can be done.
Yeah, when we celebrated the opening of Caltrain Station, there were several dignitaries, including Josh Becker, and people are looking at it and saying, what's this all about? I mean, people could just walk here, and now they've got it. So other officials in the, in the area realize that that's a mistake that we haven't been able to solve yet, so maybe we can get some traction.
Any other announcements? No? Okay. So I wanted to adjourn in honor of a community member who sadly passed. Many of us might have actually used the services at Blue Skies Cleaner downtown San Mateo. Friends, family, and the San Mateo business community are all mourning the passing of Jeff Lee, who owned Blue Skies Cleaner. Jeff's honest, reliable service kept customers coming back for many years, but it was his infectious smile and positive energy that made a lasting impression on all who had the honor of knowing him. His longtime customers will always remember his kind spirit and friendly demeanor, and this evening, we close the meeting in Jeff's memory. His impact on the community and his customers will not be forgotten. And I know that the last years of his life during the pandemic were very challenging, and, and his, his passing is, is a real tragic loss for our community, and so I hope you'll join me in a moment of silence on his behalf. Thank you.